Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I went upstairs and opened the door to the conference room. And there's a skeleton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, this is Carol Pollis.
Yate, she, Norman Lehman.
Okay, good morning, Norman.
I wanted, I wanted to call in.
How's it sounding? How many entries on the top? Come on. Entries. How you? Yeah, there's a lot coming in.
Okay, just a second, everybody, just be patient while we try to get everybody logged in here. So, we're just trying to get everybody set up, so it'll be just a second. Hold tight.
Mac, am I coming through? Marlene?
Yep, you are. Everybody should be fine as long as, so you'll be muted. And then when we ask for public comments, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, we have some new people on there.
There's a lot of new people on here.
Oh, that's, okay.
Can you guys? Good morning, can you guys hear me? I'm not just hearing. Okay, that's good. This, I'm just checking. What the heck?
This, this is Mike Beinum. My screen actually says Gina Giffen, who's my better half and is the technology expert in the family. But it is, it is me, Mike Beinum, with the gray beard and the glasses.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Thomas.
Uh, this is Yolanda, it's not.
We can, we can hear you, Yolanda. Um, if you, are you logging in your phone? Oh, yeah, yeah. He's on here. Kim's on here.
Sorry, I was able to get on.
Okay, we got it. Oh, I haven't heard his time getting. Where's your Google? Believe that I said, yeah. That's the wrong way. Uh, we are, we're almost there. Five, ready? Where are you at? Let me wait again real fast. Three, one, two, five, nine, two.
Mac, do we have to sign up or just raise our hand when we want to talk?
You'll just have to raise your hand. No place to sign up on here, I wish there were.
Okay.
Okay.
Good morning.
You still hear me?
Good morning.
Okay, just as a reminder, everybody should be on mute on here, and so hopefully, if you do get muted, please do not unmute yourself. Tell, we take public comments, so we don't have a lot of interference. We've got a bunch of people, it looks like, bouncing back and forth on here. Commissioner Mary Boy, can you hear me?
Yes, I do.
Hey, it looks like we have Commissioner Gray Eyes here. But Commissioner Adams here. John David Nelson is here. Court Governor TJ Adair, for Rose Superintendent, is here. That's all that we have here in this building. Eleven ten.
Okay, uh, I'll go ahead and call the meeting in order at this time. Time is now eleven oh, eleven ten. And, uh, we'll go ahead and proceed with the meeting. Row called, we have, uh, uh, Mr. Bruce Adams and Mr. Commissioner Mary Boy and myself. Uh, all three of them are present, so with that, uh, I'd like to go ahead and open the floor for. Anyone? Tara, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, she is, yes, Commissioner, I'm here. Yeah, I'm just, good morning, I just wanted to make a public statement in support of the, uh, agenda item number nineteen for the modification and extension of the, uh, settlement agreement that was put forth in February twenty-second, two thousand eighteen.
Hey Tara, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
In vocation.
In vocation, you want me to do invocation? Okay, I can do that. Um, let's bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for having us come together this morning again to work with one another and to be able to come to an understanding and to really work together to bring forth our communities, whether that's here in San Juan County, across the United, the state of Utah, or across the nation and around the world. Heavenly Father, we ask you, we ask that you give us guidance and support each and every day that we wake up. And, and thank you for providing us this time to work together. Heavenly Father, I pray to you in your name, in your son's name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thanks Tara.
Amen.
We'll get you back on public comments here in a second.
Well, go ahead and, uh, proceed with the next, uh, public comment. Maybe, uh, Mr. Metal, explain the rules. Go ahead.
Okay, just, some of you may not be aware of the process here. We'll allow each of you, whoever's wanting to make public comments, to, um, make a public comment. Uh, we've got a timeframe, um, no more than three minutes apiece. And so, we'll be timing you on that, you'll hear that timer go off. Once that timer goes off, if you continue, I'll just put you on mute. Um, and so, just try to wrap it up quickly as possible once that three minutes hits. Also, just kind of, as process and procedure, so, there's a feature on here. Uh, if you click on your name, you'll be able to raise your hand in the participant menu bar. That's usually easiest to see, and that's who I first go through, is that list of people that raise their hands on the system itself. And so, if you can find that feature in that option, please do so. If not, um, once we get through everybody that's raised their hand on here, if I can see you on video and you're motioning that you want to make a public comment, then we can, um, we'll all announce you at that time as well. Uh, and then, if you're on the phone and you cannot raise your hand or motion to me that you're wanting to, to make a pub, public comment, um, then. And so, we'll just go in order with that. Uh, and then, just kind of, as an acknowledgement, one of our rules, border that our commissioners passed early on is, as in your comments, please make sure that, um, you're courteous and kind. There's no real reason to call people out in a public meeting. And so, um, we've had a couple of commission meetings that that message hasn't taken very well, so please, uh, do make sure that your comments are kind, um, on here. And then, let's see, with that, just know, if you are coming in, just kind of a note for you all that there's people that are bouncing in and out constantly on the meeting. And so, we'll just try to take it in order, but there will be new people that will come in. So, just be patient with us, if you're stuck in a waiting room, if you, for some reason, lose connection, you're stuck in a waiting room, I will get to you. There's just a lot of, lot of things going on in this Brady Bunch, uh, view that I see, all these boxes going back and forth. Um, so, we'll definitely try to get you also on here. Uh, if you are called upon for a public comment, just state your name and where you live within the county. Other than that, that's kind of the rules of the game that we'll follow here. Kind of just going down the list, uh, the first one that I've got on here is Linda Smers. So Linda, if you're there, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Uh, I have unmuted myself, Mac, and, um, what I would like to ask today is if there is any, anyone who knows who is responsible for enforcing the zoning ordinance, uh, of San Juan County. As I said, my name is Linda Smers, I live in Kane Creek Estates, which is in northern San Juan County, near area BFE. Uh, this area is zoned agricultural and has two huge commercial events scheduled. Uh, rally on the rocks, May twelfth through the fifteenth, and the Ultra Four event, like we had in September, April second through the third. That particular event actually closes County Road D's Strike Ravine in order to run, um, this commercial event. According to the zoning ordinances, as I read them, uh, these two events are huge commercial events which need, um, uh, conditional use permits. And I'm wondering, who enforces that? And that is the question that I have, and I'm wondering if I could get that question answered, or if I just have to make the comment that I haven't gotten an answer to that yet.
We'll follow up with your email on those questions.
Okay.
Okay, continuing forward, the, I've got Beverly and Tim O'Neil. Are the next ones on here.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
I can.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna read this, sorry, I, it's best way for me to get my point across. My name is Beverly O'Neil, my husband, Tim, and I are Spanish Valley, northern, uh, San Juan County residents. And we want to comment today on item number nine, Sky Ranch Estates, Phase Two of the Commission meeting agenda. In spring of twenty eighteen, the Sky Ranch Phase Two application was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and residents raised many concerns about the safety and appropriateness of an active airport in Spanish Valley. At that point, the Sky Ranch developer pulled his application, and the many concerns and questions have never been answered. Now, the Sky Ranch Phase Two application is presented to the, um, Planning and Zoning Commission on February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. It appears that these questions and concerns of twenty eighteen were never addressed, nor did the developer's representative offer to explain a difference between the twenty eighteen application and the twenty twenty-one application. So, uh, what happened to all those questions? Uh, and they are on record. And what are, if any, the differences between the plans of twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-one? I also want to bring to your attention there are other Spanish Valley airspace users. There's motorized hang gliders, remote control airplanes, hang gliders, and the Moab Fire Base helicopter, which launches directly south of the Sky Ranch Airport and is very active during the warm, hot months. The day before yesterday, I was walking with my dog just north of Kim's Lake Dam. I observed a small airplane take off from Sky Ranch Airport and flying at a very low altitude flew towards northeast corner of the dam. I thought it was gonna hit the dam wall, but fortunately did not. It then flew over the dam wall, down towards a lake, which point I did not see it again until it came out on the southwest corner, very close to the Fire Base helipad. The airport use, uh, while already problematic with current population levels, will only become more of a conflict as the population in the area grows. My husband and I live just south of the airport, and the flight patterns of the aircraft planes and helicopters currently fly, currently flying in and out of the airport. Without any hangar homes built, there's a lot of activity. It's annoying, and they fly right over our rooftops, our times, so I can see the pilot out, out of my windows. The south end of the runway runs only a few feet from our road, planes will drive, there's no buffer zone on either end of the runway to protect traffic, including local school buses who route, whose route is directly on the north end of the runway. FAA recommends a large buffer zone on either end of runways. We have never been contacted by the developer as to what concerns we might have as neighbors. I welcome new homes in Spanish Valley. I think the Sky Ranch Airport should be condemned, and is only presents dangerous and hazardous consequences to the residents of Spanish Valley now, and certainly in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, I've got somebody by the name of Tommy. Who's next up? So Tommy, you should be able to go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Dr. Tommy Rock. I'm the old jet tour vice president, uh, being elected. And I like to comment on number seventeen and nineteen, which is the, seventeen is the San Juan County Commissioner will consider passing a letter of support for the extension and expansion of the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act. This letter encourages the Utah State Legislature to pass a resolution introduced by Representative Dick Owens, and for state officials to join the San Juan County Commission in lobbying the Utah Congressional delegation to support the extension of RICO. And for nineteen, I urge the Commission to approve the resolution on the agenda regarding the election procedures set on that agreement. The resolution ensures the novel voters have reasonable and effective access to voter and census and voting legislations. Uh, I'm tripping it really quick. Got that shit in there? Uh, Chey, Tommy Rock, when she, oh, that's where in the shadow. These, um, these cases, any, uh, the, uh, these, that's how they get it. Um, extend all this, any, any, by yes, she, out of the, out of the care, yeah, the, um, not, they, they could have, and they, um, so you know, that's, it, it, because, um, so you, that, that, this, the, this, no, this, the, uh, the, that, that, uh, the, that, that, and that's, that, that, the, um, so, that's, that, 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 and thank you, and that will be my comment.
Thank you, appreciate that, Tommy. Okay, the next one here, I've got Marlene Huckabee. Okay, hold on, Marlene, you're muted. So, let me, you can go ahead and unmute yourself, it looks like.
Are you unmuted? Okay?
There you go.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners and Mac, Marlene Huckabee on Sunny Acres Lane. Uh, this is regarding the water board, is this too soon to talk about it?
No, with public comments, this is it.
We need local neighbors that care about our waters, our, our, our boards, especially a water board. We need new people, new ideas. If we don't think forward and take care of our precious water, we could end up as another dust bowl, for sure. The first candidate, Manette Clark, is a longtime resident, homeowner, and involved with community. She's retired, and time to devote to this board, or to any board, to preserve our assets, water especially. She has no conflict of interest, her agenda is to take care of our land. She has served on the grand P and Z for years, she knows the rules. She is well-educated and has run her own technical writing business for years. She ran a family-owned B and B in Moab. She managed a large apartment building in Denver, Colorado, that came with dealing with all kinds of contractors, water, electrical, plumbing, and dealing with people. She's, she knows how to do that. The next one is Dave Ficardi. Just read his resume, you'll knock your socks off. He truly is a water man with tons of experience and cares about our land and our water. Dave is a homeowner, not a promoter. Lives on Sunny Acres. He has lived a total of twenty-eight years in Moab, with fifteen on Sunny Acres. He worked for Rocky Mountain as a web, well-sighted geologist for twenty-five years. He was in the Peace Corps in Africa, helping villages and small towns with their water issues. Currently is working with a nonprofit maintaining solar in the desert, Mojave Desert. Both Manette and Dave are conscious with no conflict of interest. They want to preserve our mountain, our, and maintain our precious water. We do not get another chance, this is the time, now, before it's all gone, before we turn on the tap and there's nothing there. I know Commissioner Mary Boy and Gray Eyes, and maybe Adams, know what it's like to haul water, to drink, and to take showers. They've done it. Please put these two people on the board with new energy, new time, more time, ideas, Manette and Dave, before it's too late, the time's running out. And as far as Sky Ranch, I hope you'll table that for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Marlene. Let's see here. Okay, the next one on here, it looks like I've got Commissioner Mary McEn. Commissioner, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello, 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 uh, Commissioners, I'm Mary Boy and Gray Eyes and Adams. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I, uh, would like, I'm on the airport board for Grand County. And one thing I think is really important, no matter what, we need to really look closely at the airstrip for, uh, you know, the ranch airstrip. And at the very least, uh, we need to create approved flight plans to protect the neighbors in that area. Uh, so I would encourage you to postpone this decision until we've had an opportunity to involve, uh, the neighbors in creating some type of manner, way in which the planes could have the least impact.
No.
So, thank you. So, I'd ask to postpone, uh, the decision on, uh, the ranch.
Thank you. I'm just trying to figure out, are you representing the Commission, or just?
No, at this point, we haven't made a, uh, specific, you know, we haven't had it on our agenda to make a public, so this is, I'm, I'm speaking as a individual who happens on the Commission. I thank you. Said that at the beginning.
Wanted to make sure I got it right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, hold on. Messed up my view. Messed up my view. Give me a second. Okay, the next one, I've got Kevin Walker on here. Kevin, are you here?
Um, yes, I am.
Hey, go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, well, again, thank, thank you for the opportunity to speak and hello to Commissioners, Gray Eyes, Mary Boy, and Adams. Um, I am also talking about the Sky Ranch airstrip, um, agenda item. Um, you know, as you well know, probably ninety more, well over ninety percent of the population of Grand County lives, lives about within nine or ten miles of this airstrip. So it has a big effect on all of us and also on the residents of Northern San Juan County. Um, in our narrow valley, uh, flights are a really big deal. More, more than twenty years ago, Grand County, um, through its land use code restricted flights in, um, in Spanish Valley. So the, the sort of thing that's being proposed at Sky Ranch would not be legal across the grant, the county line in Grand County. Um, the airstrip has been there for a long time, but the reuse has been relatively low. For it to be a big increase in use, that, that has huge effects on the peace and quiet of people living around. So I think this is a, a large momentous decision whose effects will be felt in Spanish Valley for many years to come. And I urge you to postpone, you know, not make a quick decision. I think it should be postponed until we have time to consider it from many different angles. So, again, you know, more, more generally, you know, the, we're, we're in one valley, things that happen on one side of the county line affect things that happen on the other. And I'm hoping in the future, you can try to coordinate our policies better, so for the benefit of residents on both, both sides of the county line. Thank you.
Okay, the next one I've got on here is David Ficardi, either. I saw you earlier.
Hi, thanks, Mac. So I'm just gonna read my qualifications for, uh, uh, being on the Special Service District Water Board. I'm hoping the Commissioners could, uh, appoint me as, as one of the members. So my name's Dave Ficardi. I live on forty-nine hundred Sunny Acres Lane. I've been here for the last fifteen years. Before that, I lived down in Moab, uh, for thirteen. So, um, my background is I worked as a well site geologist for twenty-five years in the Rocky Mountain region for geologic consulting companies that contracted their services to oil and gas companies, both large and small. Um, I was a hydrologist in the Peace Corps thirty-eight years ago in West Africa, where I was helping towns and villages locate their water wells for clean water sources. So I have an understanding of hydrology reports and drilling issues. Uh, as far as, um, you know, I'm, I'm a resident, I'm not developing any projects here in this valley, but for the last seven years, I've been involved as a trust member on a nonprofit board in Colorado, where we're developing a hundred and fifty-six acre project that involves providing water and sewer for a hundred and twenty people. Uh, I'm currently negotiating the engineering design contract with a firm to provide the water delivery, uh, fire water delivery and sewer construction, uh, document designs. Prior to that, I was instrumental in, uh, getting that, uh, that property's residential well repermitted as a small capacity commercial, which is a technical term in the state of Colorado, um, as well as verifying the water rights before closing on that property. Uh, part of that due diligence included identifying embedding water attorneys and working with the Colorado Division of Water Resources and specialist water consultants. So I understand the value of experts and the need for, uh, working together to get a project completed. And all this has been on behalf of a nonprofit organization whose sole source of funding is private donations. So cost consciousness is of the highest priority. Basically, we're trying to get people to volunteer to pay taxes to put forth a project that they're interested in. Um, I would keep, uh, cost consciousness in mind while working on water and sewer planning issues for Spanish Valley. I also understand the importance of coordination with other affected entities such as Grand County and state agencies. And personally, uh, I've gone through the adjudication process for, uh, in Utah for wells on two residential properties that my wife and I have owned. And I currently have five shares of Ken's Lake Water. And once again, I have no, um, commercial development interest, uh, here in San Juan County.
And what characterizes before you have to?
Oh, sorry, I'm also on a, uh, professional conference on the other computer, so I'm gonna mute myself. Thanks.
Look right there. Hey, thanks, David. Okay, sorry about that. So Mark, are you there? You're, it looks like you're up next.
Is that me, Mac?
Mark Shapiro, is it you?
Great.
Take it away.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Mark Shapiro. I live southeast of Spanish Valley, and I want to speak to you this morning about the San Juan, Spanish Valley Special Service District. You may have played a game with your children or grandchildren where you look at pictures and say, what's the same and what's different? If we were to play that game with Spanish Valley and the rest of San Juan County, what's the same is obvious. Relatively small communities and a constant search for water. What's different is that Spanish Valley is facing potential growth, lots of it. There's one more thing that's different, which is less apparent. Sittler owns almost all of unbuilt Spanish Valley, over five thousand acres. Sittler thinks in long time periods. So when we talk about growth in Spanish Valley, we need to be prepared, not just for the next couple of years, but for the next forty years. And here's where the game of same and different gets really interesting. What happens if we have the potential for forty years of growth, but only, let's say, fifteen years of real water left in our wells and streams? That's what the San Juan Spanish Valley Special Service District ought to be planning for. But the only way that can happen is if its members are committed to asking hard questions about what kind of growth gets approved today and what serves the public interest for decades to come. Fortunately, you have two people available for vacancies on the Special District Board who fit that description. You've heard their qualifications already this morning. Dave Ficardi and Monette Clark share in common a driving motivation to ensure that the voices of Spanish Valley residents are heard by those making decisions about this wonderful place. We need Dave Ficardi and Monette Clark. San Juan County needs Dave and Monette. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Okay, it looks like the next one on here, I've got Carl Spielman. Carl, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can, go ahead, take it away.
Well, good morning, everyone and Commissioners. Um, my name's Carl Spielman, and I'm commenting on, uh, the Sky Ranch Phase Two, uh, Item Nine on the agenda. I've owned a property adjoining Sky Ranch immediately to the south since nineteen ninety-eight. I'm a forty-year commercial pilot with multiple ratings. Um, the runway at Sky Ranch ends at my driveway. There are no safety overruns or barricades to keep aircraft whose pilots overshoot their landings or takeoffs from entering my property. The same situation exists at the north end where traffic, including schoolchildren, cross the path of landing and departing aircraft with no safety provisions. These types of provisions are clearly spelled out by the FAA, and they encourage county planners to use this knowledge when designing small airport zoning requirements through the conditional use provisions. In twenty eighteen, the P and Z asked Sky Ranch to incorporate some of these safety provisions into their application plat. The plat submitted last Thursday's P and Z meeting does not appear to contain these improvements, and none have been resolved to protect my family when using our own driveway. Someone can be injured if the county willfully disregards these prudent measures. I'm asking the Commissioners to table the approval of Sky Ranch Phase Two until the public can meet with the P and Z on their next cycle to satisfy some of our concerns. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Carl. Okay, let's see, the next one, I've got Carolyn. Carolyn, are you there?
I sure am. Thank you. This is Carolyn Daly from Spanish Valley. I want to say good morning to everyone, and I wish to speak to two of the agenda items. Uh, first, I also want to urge the Commission to point Dave Ficardi and Monette Clark to two of the vacancies on the Spanish Valley Special Service District Board. Of note, on the county's website, this board is found under the heading, "How to Get Involved." How can new citizens get involved when the same people are routinely reappointed to these boards? It is only fair to give new people the opportunity to serve and bring new perspectives and ideas. Monette and Dave are very qualified and will represent all residents. They have no potential conflicts of interest whatsoever. It also only would be fair to have a woman appointed to this all men board. Nobody's mentioned that yet. Uh, to ensure continuity with the three vacancies on a five-member board, I suggest that Chairman Frank Darcy be reappointed after his expired term. This would give a continuity of three members as well as their same chairman. So if you're willing to let new people in, it is most logical that they would put it, be put in the vacancies of Mike Bynum and Lloyd Wilson. I ask you to please be fair today and appoint Clark and Ficardi for the vacancies of Bynum and Wilson. Please allow Dave and Monette to get involved in our local government. Secondly, I want to urge the Commission, uh, to table the Sky Ranch Phase Two subdivision until more information can be researched and experts consulted regarding the impact of the seventy-five lot development and its airstrip. This is not only a large subdivision, it's a large subdivision with a private airstrip. Sky Ranch was residents' biggest concern during the development of the Spanish Valley Area Plan several years ago, and this will explain, expand the number of lots by tenfold. There are many important unanswered questions regarding Sky Ranch, including whether the technicalities of a minimum lot size have been met, and whether there's a written letter of, of certification of availability of drinking water. And as others have said, in two thousand and eighteen, P and Z required a conditional use permit and runway improvements as recommended by the FAA, and there's no indication this has been done. Most important are questions about the safety of a private airstrip in a residential area. The runway ends twenty-five feet from roads used by neighbors and school buses. Families stroll down it now, and hang gliders land there. The fire protection center is only a few miles south. How will air traffic be controlled to not endanger the public and other airspace? These compelling questions need to be answered before you can make up your, make your decision to expand Sky Ranch, to assure that you're protecting the health, safety, and welfare of your citizens. Please table it today until more information can be gathered. And thank you for your consideration of my views and for supporting the residents in Spanish Valley. Thanks, Mac.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, all right. Let's see. Looks like I have. President Niz, are you there?
Yes, Mac, hold on one moment, please. Hello, can you, Mac, can you hear me?
I can, President Niz. Three minutes. We can hear you here, huh?
Hello?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, one second, please. Any questions for Wally?
Hey, Mac?
All right, all right, we're, okay.
You're, you're unmuted.
Unmute?
You're, you're unmuted.
Okay, I can do that. All right, good. Good morning, everybody. Jonathan Niz here.
Morning, Jonathan.
Oh, uh, Chair and members of the Commission and the San Juan County leadership and, and s, and the staff, and everybody that's, uh, listening in. You know, we were anticipating making the, um, this, uh, public comment earlier this morning, but I appreciate being asked to, um, to do this, uh, before the Commission. So it's an honor to be before, uh, the San Juan County Commission today. First of all, I, I want to say thank you, um, for a, a great, uh, and successful turnout in the recent elections. You know, we're, we're talking about voting rights and trying to get as many of our citizens to the poll to cast your vote. And, uh, what a great turnout that was, uh, all across the country for the federal and state. And that, that's the reason why we, uh, you know, we put the Navajo Nation elections and, uh, the, the state, uh, county and federal elections together to, to bring out the, uh, uh, the turnout. And ever since we've done that, I think it's been very, very successful in bringing people to the polls. Uh, the, um, Voting Rights Settlement Agreement that will be before you for your consideration is of utmost important, importance to the Navajo people. And we ask for your support. I know that you've all worked hard. Uh, we believe it's good faith negotiations, uh, in moving forward on the provisions that are a part of, uh, this, uh, settlement agreement. Uh, number one, it ensures, you know, our voters have access to the Dene language, uh, assistance services. Number two, it, it open voter assistance and early voting locations. Number three, uh, open in-person voting locations on, uh, on our nation. Uh, number four, establish a budget to ensure effective voter services, uh, that voter services are provided. Uh, this agreement, as we all understand, and I understand, expires March third, twenty twenty-one. So it is at a stage where it needs to be reauthorized or renewed. And, um, the, uh, extending and, and improving the settlement agreement. And thank you to San Juan Commissioners, uh, for, uh, preparing and helping assist in the settlement agreement. The voter assistance, early voting, we appreciate, uh, the voting offices um, in Monazuma Creek and Bluff and Monnet Valley. And the way this proposal was set, it was also include, uh, Aneth, Red Mesa, and Mexican Water, and Navajo Mountain. So it will assist, uh, more of our Navajo citizens in getting questions answered, um, on San Juan County, uh, voting issues. Uh, the language assistance, thank you. You know, a lot of our Navajo citizens, they speak only Navajo. And that was evident during the election with, uh, you all's support on giving information through the radio, where many people were very happy, and I heard some great, uh, you know, positive remarks from allowing, uh, the Navajo, uh, explanation of voting in San Juan County in the Navajo language through the radio. And that would, uh, continue under this new agreement. So I appreciate, we appreciate that. Election Day polling places, uh, Monazuma Creek, Monnet Valley, Navajo Mountain, uh, would also include Aneth Chapter and Red Mesa Chapter, Mexican Water, Old Jake Portal, uh, Navajo Mountain Chapters. Old Jake Portal, uh, Navajo Mountain Chapters. You know, when, when people go to the polls, it, it's not just about casting a vote, it's also getting people, uh, updated on local politics, national, state, county, national politics. And it's a way to rekindle, uh, plan relations as well. And so that is something that we've been really advocating more that, um, we shouldn't do away with uh, polling sites or the day of election, um, or, uh, voting. And, uh, the other item is, uh, as I mentioned, requiring, uh, radio announcements. I think the new agreement has other radio stations to be a part of that, so that's a good thing. This would extend the, uh, this, uh, negotiation into, uh, November two thousand and forty for the Navajo people. So do I, I guess there's a timeline, huh?
There was, yep. We've allowed you to go over just because of respect of your office and that, um...
Well, thank you for respecting the Navajo people. And, uh, I, I pretty much went through the, uh, the items that we've supported. We appreciate the continuation of our language being utilized to explain the San Juan County, uh, election information. Uh, as, uh, we all know, the Navajo language has helped, uh, win battles and help win war. And we want our Navajo young people to understand that is very important to continue our Navajo language, especially in terms of elections. But thank you, Chairman, thank you, Vice Chair, members of the, uh, San Juan County Commission, allowing me to present our support for the renewal of this settlement agreement on behalf of the Navajo people. Uh, that sounds like, uh, Mr. Gray Eyes, yes, good.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, I do apologize for speaking a little longer, that's just how we are Navajo. We top things out, that's called Nabikiyetki, a way of life, our culture and our tradition. Thank you. So that concludes my, my, uh, public comment, I guess, for our, our position on this, uh, settlement, voter rights settlement, uh, agreement. Thank you and God bless.
Okay, continuing on, the next one we've got, Marilyn Holly. Marilyn, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, I can see you.
Hi, uh, my name is Marilyn Holly, I live, uh, south of Montezuma Creek, um, south of San Juan River. I'm, I am also the Vice President of Red Mesa Chapter. I appreciate that the county expanded, uh, expanded their option, uh, for, uh, in-person voting in twenty twenty. The, and the, um, uh, this past year, even, even though through the pandemic, a lot of people have voted and, and, and it was a huge, um, huge, um, outcome for us, you know? So that was, that was good, but, but like I said, even though, um, uh, we, we had a high turnout, we still need to, um, uh, put our, um, uh, in-person voting at the chapters. Uh, I, I noticed that it is on the, uh, on the settlement agreement for, uh, and Red Mesa is on the list, so that's good. I know we've done this before, uh, some years back, um, I, uh, probably six years ago, four, four years ago, we, we used to, the, our community used to vote, um, at the chapter for the state and the tribe, so, um, it, it made it pretty easy for people to come out and just come out to the chapter and vote for both, uh, both elections. So, um, uh, I'm also in support of this settlement, proposed settlement agreement. And, um, and, and the commission, of course, is considering a resolution supporting this renewed settlement agreement with the Human Rights Commission, so I am in support of that, so, um, I just want to thank you for having me, um, on the, um, uh, on the comment here, uh, for, um, and it is especially for the elderly, you know? This last election, I had to pick up some elderly, and even not just elderly, some younger folks. I had to pick them up and, and take them down to Montezuma Creek from Red Mesa, so, um, that, that, that's what we had to do. And, and there wasn't that many people, uh, giving rides for people, so I, I had to do most of it, so. So, um, it's kind of hard when, when we have to go so far to vote, so this in-person voting is very pertinent. The chapter, and it's about thirty-five miles drive for some people, you know, it's, uh, it's quite a ways, so. And, and, and even the mail-in ballots, you know, some people don't really know how to use it, so they, 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 they turn it in till election day and we have to transport them out. So thank you very much, I hope the commissioners will pass this resolution, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your comments. The, uh, the next one, I've got Don and Denise.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can, go ahead.
Hi, um, my name's Denise Soblik, I'm here with my husband, Don. We live in the Blue Vista subdivision just across the county line in, in Grand County. Uh, we're about a mile from the Sky Ranch airstrip. And our home happens to lie directly in the flight path of the runway approach. So we're, we're kind of concerned about this issue. Um, I only became aware of this meeting yesterday, so I'm not really as prepared as I'd like to be, but, um, I would urge the commissioners, uh, to table the Sky Ranch request until critical safety issues regarding the airstrip have been answered. As far as I can tell, this application seems to be, um, all about the housing development, but no reference to the airstrip. But to me, it's obvious that the target market for this type of development would be the flying community. Without stringent safety standards being addressed up front, our home and all of those in Southern Spanish Valley are at risk. We have already had one close call, uh, a while back with a pilot from out of the area that crash landed on the old airstrip. So, uh, the danger is real. And even without the Phase Two development, we have already seen a huge increase in air traffic over our home, including red-tail flights and a very distinctive black helicopter, which has been flying less than two hundred feet over our house on many occasions. The commission has the opportunity to be proactive in this issue and avoid making mistakes that Grand County has sometimes made in letting development get out in front of planning. Please use this chance to get a detailed plan from Mr. Bynum on exactly how the airstrip will be used and any safety protocols that will be put in place. Thank you very much for your time. I guess we're done, thank you.
Okay, let's see, the next one on here, I've got Nick Lee.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is Nick Lee and, um, I am on here this morning to urge the commission to postpone the decision on the Sky Ranch. Uh, I've been concerned about the lack of public outreach and, um, public input on the project. I live in San Juan County, I live in Spanish Valley and my property borders the proposed Sky Ranch Airport. I moved here for the peace and quiet, however, the valley's tranquility will be compromised if the proposed Sky Ranch fly-in development is approved. San Juan County worked with Landmark Design on a development plan for this part of the valley, creating a smart development plan is a good idea. However, developing an airport in the middle of a residential area is a bad idea and incompatible with Landmark's plan. I cannot see any urban planner putting an elementary school off the end of an airport runway or an airport in the middle of a growing residential neighborhood. The strong, uh, part of my concern is, uh, safety and strong shifting winds in the valley are notoriously dangerous. Who's going to be liable when the plane ends up in someone's living room or in, in an elementary school's classroom? Is the developer or San Juan County going to take responsibility? I hope we never get to that point where we have to ask that question. If, if the developer really wants to fly in development, maybe he should consider developing the project out of the valley, away from residential neighborhoods. This would give the potential investors the opportunity to opt in to the associated noise and safety issues of an airport. The proposed Sky Ranch would force current residents to live with the consequences in perpetuity for something, something they never signed up for. A different location would also remove the black cloud hanging over landmarks, propose urban plan and let everybody get what they want. If the Sky Ranch Airport moves forward, I see a future with a lot of unhappy property owners, potential court battles, and potential fatal airplane accidents. Let's not wait and see, let's have smart urban planning starting right now. It just seems like they're trying to shoehorn this flying park into five-hundred-foot-wide property. If this was a FAA-certified airport, my current house and most of my neighborhood would be in the no-build zone. And recently, yeah, there has been a helicopter, uh, flying in and out and blowing dust onto the adjacent property. It just seems like a, a bad fit, uh, for this neighborhood and for this end of the valley. Um, that's all I have for today, thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Okay, the next one, I've got Monet, are you there?
Okay, um, can you hear me now?
Got it, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, good morning, Commissioners. Today on your action agenda, you have the approval of Phase Two of Sky Ranch Development. And, um, I'd like to ask you to table the issue and send it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission so that they can do their due diligence and get the answer to so many of these important safety questions that were heard today, I have the same safety questions myself. I think there's two issues here that really need to be separated to be sure we all understand that there's, one, the application for building of, of houses, Phase Two has now changed from twenty-four homes in twenty eighteen to seventy-five homes in this latest application. But the building of homes themselves is, uh, is okay with me, as long as it follows the, uh, um, zoning rules. But the airstrip is a second situation and it's really unclear the impact of the housing on the airstrip, and I think that really needs to be clarified. The airstrip was expanded and enlarged three years ago, but it seems that no conditional use of the flight or this, uh, there's a lot of controversy about whether one is needed, et cetera. So this is just part of the many unanswered questions. So I, I want to remind you that we have at least a hundred and fifty residential homes right now surrounding Sky Ranch airstrip and I, I'm one of them. I also get to table this and to back the P and Z and then, uh, allow the neighbors to work with the Planning Commission and the developer. We would love to sit down together and basically try to understand, uh, the goals of the developer and the, uh, so we could work together, so we can, everybody can have a win-win. The original airstrip was for six homes and it seems like six homes would be fine, but seventy-five homes with airplanes and possible hangars, et cetera. We just need more understanding, we do ask at this table, and I, I don't know, have I have any time left?
You are eighteen, seventeen seconds.
Oh, okay, well, I know that you have to decide or you're on the agenda today as the Special Service Water District Board, uh, appointments and I have a side to serve. Just wanted to say that I'm, I'm an average homeowner and I'm a customer of the district. I have a desire to serve, I think I have skills to help, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, the next one, I've got Colby Smith, Colby, are you there?
Uh, I am, thank you, Matt, um, and I'm here with Holly Sloan, my wife. Um, I just wanted to address Agenda Item Ten, if that's in order now. Uh, and thank you Commissioners for your, um, for your attention to all of the comments today. Uh, Item Ten is a revision of the Spanish Valley zoning map, and you may recall that this map came before you, several meetings ago, and there were a number of community comments about, uh, the map. And I, what I wanted to do is, uh, first of all, tell you we support the revisions that have been made to the map, and secondly, I wanted to compliment, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission because they really took the comments from the public to heart, uh, made, uh, changes to the map that were designed to address all of those comments. Uh, and I think they found, uh, uh, you know, a middle ground that, uh, is, uh, responsive to the community interests and that we think provides a good foundation for, uh, the zoning in highway commercial zone in particular going forward. So we wanted to express our support for the revised map and also to compliment the Planning and Zoning Commission for their efforts to be so responsive to the community. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, the next one, I've got Kenny Victor, Kenny, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Good to see you.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, for giving me the time to address, um, Item Nineteen. That's the proposed settlement of, um, due to expire in, uh, two thousand and twenty-four. And let me briefly introduce myself, my name's Kenny Victor. I'm a Department of State Chapter President, I'm also a resident of San Juan County. I live in, um, what they call is Navajo White Mesa. I've been a resident for ten years and, um, during my tenure, um, I believe there's, uh, three hundred constituents that are affected by this proposal. And, um, recently, uh, with, with, um, with the pandemic, I, I realized a lot of the, um, let me highlight the voter assistance office. I think it'll be very beneficial for some of these elders and, um, to, to have a localized voter assistance office. And then just looking at myself, um, I'm going to be stepping over into the realm of being an elder, which I'm, so, uh, I think it'll be beneficial for myself as well. But, um, on the long run, um, when you look at elders and you understand their cultural ties and their social economic status, you kind of understand that, you know, like, uh, they have to commute locally just due to the economic, economic status. So what I have, um, what I like for the commission or respectfully asking the commissions is to, um, approve this measure of extending this proposed settlement. And I read the proposed settlement, it's a very doable document and I believe it will very, it will be very beneficial to the, uh, people that I serve as well. And, um, I'd like to say thank you in advance for, um, considering this proposed settlement. And I believe, um, anything outside of, um, the proposed settlement, I think everything that I see, what I seen in grain and writing, it would be very beneficial to the, to the local residents. what I seen in grain and writing, it would be very beneficial to the local residents that I serve. So thank you again so well. And I appreciate President Snez's comments here. I don't want to go dwell into what he said, but some of those points are well taken, and I appreciate it. Thank you again.
Thank you, Kenny.
Did you have a comment, Commissioner Mayor Boy? Not hearing any. Let's continue. We've got John. Are you on, John? I see you. Go ahead, John.
Oh, is this for John Wyssite?
It's you. Yep, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. Or yes, it is good afternoon. My name's John Wyssite. I run two nonprofits in Moab. One's called Living Rivers, and I work also for the Canyonlands Watershed Council. I'm also a member of the Waterkeeper Alliance. I've been working on Colorado River issues my entire life. This is my father's fault. He was an employee lifetime for General Electric. He sold generators to the Bureau of Reclamation. I've been to every dam and every steam plant in the Colorado River Basin since I was walking as an infant. And I guess I want to direct what I'm about to say to San Juan Spanish Valley Special Service District. I think it is appropriate to have Monae and Dave Ficardi on your board for diversity's sake. But I also want to avail myself to be a technical advisor if needed. The reason why is because I had looked at Colorado River issues my whole life. I understand the issues very, very well. I know that the, that Moab City Grand Water Sewer Service Agency and the Service District for San Juan County are all going to want to take water from the Colorado River. And I just want to point out that this is a huge distraction. By the time you get the federal permitting, by the time you could do the compliance for clearances, raise the money, work through the litigation process, you know, you're looking at infrastructure that won't be built for 30 to 40 years. And that's why it's a huge distraction. We're going to run out of water, our groundwater, before 30 years. And so you need people to focus on what's happening right now, not looking at the future. Because, for example, this morning, I went to the 24-month report by the Bureau of Reclamation. The current deficit for Lake Powell and Lake Mead averages on an annual basis 1.6 million acre feet. To restore Glen, to restore Lake Powell and Lake Mead, you're going to need 3.2 million acre feet a year for the next 20 years to bring it back to balance. And that just isn't going to happen. And so, in fact, shortages for Arizona are scheduled to happen on January 1st, 2022. That's only 10 months away. And in fact, it is very possible that Lake Powell.
Okay, continuing for, sorry, John, we had to cut you off. Your time is up. Let's see, the next one on here, I've got Tara Benali. Tara, are you there?
I am here, John. Mac, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm here. Yeah, hey, hi. My name is Tara Benali, and I work for, I'm the Field Director for Rural Utah Project, and I would like to do a public comment for Item 19, Agenda Item 19. I would like to ask the commissioners to support this. Reason being is, working with the nonprofit organization Rural Utah Project, we have seen so much happen for our people in the last couple of years. First, let me introduce myself. I was born in Monticello, Utah, raised within the Navajo Nation's Mexican Water Chapter boundaries in southern San Juan County, Utah. I would like to thank the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission and the plaintiffs who took part in the litigation on behalf of the Utah Navajos who reside here in the southern part of San Juan County. During this litigation, both sides were faced with many challenges, but in the end, both the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission, along with the plaintiffs and the county clerk's office, were able to come up with an agreement in 2018. Within this settlement agreement, we, as a nonprofit organization, along with the county clerk's office and the Office of the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission, were able to educate and help community members to access polling locations within their community. We also worked together to identify individuals who are certified Navajo interpreters to be at polling locations to help with language assistance. When we all work together, we can help to advance one another. I would also like to acknowledge and thank John David Nielsen and his office for going above and beyond by opening up early vote locations at the chapters across the southern part of the county this past election year 2020. We know this settlement agreement is working as more people are using the early voting and Election Day locations year after year. We want to see these voting locations open for years to come. I ask the commission to support this resolution. Thank you, Mac. That'll be it.
Okay, I appreciate it. Okay, the next one I have on here, Frank Darcy. Frank, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, Mac. Can you hear me now?
Go ahead, take it away.
Yeah, I'd like, my name is Frank Darcy. I'm the chairman of the San Juan Spanish Valley Special Service District, and I would like to express my appreciation to the commissioners for allowing me to talk today. I would like to express my support for the board members as we've presented them to the commission. We've worked together for years, and we're a very cohesive board. We all bring our own special expertise to the board. For example, I was, I'm retired National Park Service Facility Manager at several parks with an intimate knowledge of water and wastewater systems. And I would, like you say, I would like to express my support, and especially for Lloyd Wilson, who provides a, an integral support to air troubleshooting, maintenance on the system and whatnot. So to remove him would throw the whole board into chaos. So therefore, I just want to voice my support, and I would also like to welcome any of these folks who have been speaking today to join in Zoom on our Special Service District meeting the second Wednesday. That has spoken today, join in on our meeting, so I'd like to welcome you to do so. With that, I just want to thank you and bow out.
Thank you, Frank. Let's see, the next person on here, I've got Nathaniel Brown. Nathaniel, are you there?
Yes, good afternoon. Is it noon yet? Yes, it is. Hello, Mac, and then San Juan County Commissioners. My name is Nathaniel Brown. I am an elected Navajo Nation Council delegate. I do represent San Juan County voters here on the Navajo Nation. I also am the chairman of the Navajo Utah Commission. So thank you for this time, and everyone that's listening, thank you so much. I here am also calling in in support of Item Number 19 on your agenda. I know with this, the Navajo Nation has done their diligence, and specifically our voters there in San Juan County. If some of you have driven to the different chapters for voting sites, it is far and in between. We would like to, we continue to follow the laws, the constitutional laws, the basic human right, and it's a privilege to vote. So we want to continue to have everyone voice their opinions and to be involved within, with the San Juan County government and the rest of the state as well. So with that, I hear and I urge the commission to support Item Number 19, a resolution statement, the intent and position regarding the stipulated settlement agreement, the Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission in San Juan County. On behalf of all people, I urge this commission to support this initiative. We will continue to do our work on not just Navajo site, but we do have our, as an elected person who speaks for the Navajo people, I speak not just for individuals that reside on the Navajo Nation, but we do have a lot of our Navajo people who live in San Juan County and all over the Utah and the United States as well. So again, it's an honor and a privilege to address this body, and I wish you all a wonderful day. Thank you. And again, on behalf of the 24th Navajo Nation Council and the Navajo people, let's continue to work together. I am, I am here, and I have wonderful working relationships with Utah leadership, and will continue to make and build this bridge and make it stronger. So I am here, and however we can work together, I'm available. So thank you for your time. Have a good day, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next one has her hand up, or the last one has their hand up. Well, hold on. So Kim Anderson, Kim, go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners. I'd like to comment on the expansion of, the expansion of Phase Two of the Sky Ranch Development. I feel it's important for the commission to respect and uphold the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning Commission has been appointed by the county to systematically review and approve commercial and residential development in the county. They are tasked with the job of reviewing county codes while keeping in mind the best interest of all people involved. It's my understanding that after careful consideration and review of all information and codes, the Planning Commission approved Big Fashion and/or Phase Two of Sky Ranch. The Sky Ranch development will definitely benefit San Juan County. I'm sure with that in mind, San Juan County has delegated work for this, such as securing large amounts of grant money throughout sewer and water to Spanish Valley. As a lifelong resident of San Juan County and a member of the Monticello City Council, I support responsible growth. That goal, I would support, support the possible growth and encourage the commission to approve the expansion of the Sky Ranch community. This will provide much-needed tax revenue for the county. I do understand the concerns of those in the Sky Ranch area. However, I would encourage those individuals to stay up to speed on topics of the agenda, of the PNC agendas. This will avoid making them feel blindsided and will allow the county to move forward on business without repeating steps in already very timely matters. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Let's see, I see a Thoma raising your hand. Thoma?
Hi, my name is Yolanda Badbeck, and I'm from White Mesa. And I would like to support the Item 19 and want the commissioners to support it as well, and then modification and extension of the settlement agreement dated on February 22nd, 2018. And I would like to have a poll to be here in White Mesa as well, so we, so I could be able to have our little community here in White Mesa to be able to vote, because I know a lot of our community members here don't vote. They're not included in the voting thing. So I would like to have a poll here and have them actually come to the community and do a voting, to do their vote. And that's all I got to say.
Mike?
Cadet? On the phone, huh? So, okay, thank you for that. Just in lieu of time, hopefully we can try to speed some of this up. If your comments have been made before, we're trying not to be repetitive in nature on these. And so as we go through, like, if they've been made before, it doesn't mean you have to make them again. We've heard you were not keeping tally or anything on how many are in opposition or for an item on here. So hopefully that'll help speed things up if we've heard it before with the commissioners. We have a lot that we are continuing to go through on about comments. And so the next one that I have raised their hands is under a phone number. It's not registered under a name, but it's 385-394-7498.
Good afternoon. Yeah, hey. Norman Lehman, when she, I don't read Mesa, so she has kind of Utah, I didn't know she all already care. Oh, did the agenda 19, hi, so he, I let support this resolution, extension, settlement agreement. So he is so he, yeah, I support this even yeah, he call in this law. I don't, yeah, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Mayor Boy, Commissioner Gray Eyes, I don't know, man. Oh, yeah, thank you for taking my call. I don't know, yeah, I, 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 number one is so he Navajo language interpreter. I'm gonna give, eh, I, 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 resolution, support this, extension of this settlement agreement. Do this, so he did, I, 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 Arro, Yeah, Again, Arro, Commissioner Adams, Uh, A, Ta, N, E, La, Shabanda, De, Do, K, To, Shat, Shat, Ba, Ba, Ha, Si, Shab, Be, Bichna, To, Si. E, Ho, Ta, E, Do, Le, To, Na, Na, Yeah. Thank you for your time and I appreciate you for taking this call. One, eh.
Do you understand, Mr. Adams?
What? I didn't understand.
You're like, uh, what you're from, Mr. Adams, what I said?
There you go. You're my interpreter. You gotta pay me. Okay.
I thought Meg was gonna interpret that.
Well, I was lost. Sorry, because that's not going in the minutes either. All right, the next.
Good comment.
We've got um Jeff. Jeff, that's all we have on you.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Uh, thanks a lot, commission, for uh listening to our comments. Uh, just quickly, I would like to uh voice my support for Dave and Monet on the Special Service District. And I, I understand that, you know, Lloyd has a lot of uh, it sounded like a lot of technical knowledge on the system. Um, I guess I could just recommend, just like John had, had offered his services as a technical advisor, maybe the same could, could happen with Lloyd. Because I already know, you know, he's really busy and he's, he's on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, you know, maybe let's uh spread out some of his um, his workload. Um, I'd also like to um recommend that the commission table the Sky Ranch subdivision application. I, I attended the uh Planning and Zoning meeting the other night where that was approved. And a lot of the comments that were made today were made at that meeting. Um, there are a lot of things that are unanswered and they weren't answered at the Planning and Zoning uh Commission meeting. Um, there was a lot of talk about how, how good the drainage plan was, but not much about the safety. And, and just what's gonna happen when you have seventy-some residents with planes. So, I, I really think that this needs to be tabled and a lot of these questions need to be answered. Thanks.
Hey, Jeff, will you mention just where you're from real quick in the county?
I live in uh Pat Creek, San Juan County.
Thank you.
Next to Spanish Valley. And I have the helicopters flying over me too.
Okay, let's see, the next one, I've got Terry. Looks like you're muted, Terry. Still muted. There you go.
Can you hear me? Okay. Uh, good morning, this is Terry White Hat. I am from Navajo Mountain and I'm here to urge you to support the extension and expansion of twenty-eighteen settlement agreement. As a plaintiff in the case, I have traveled many miles to make a difference as far as voting issues goes. And also would like to urge commissioners to support the youth, the White Mesa area community. In reference to the early voting, I believe it was a success. Uh, I do appreciate that. But, uh, we, I believe we still need to do more. Um, in essence, I'm requesting that the settlement agreement be extended into twenty-forty, if maybe beyond twenty-forty. Um, again, thank you for this opportunity to Mr. Gray Eyes, to Mr. Mary Boy and Commissioner Adams. I do appreciate our leaders. I do pray often for them. Uh, that's all I have to say. And let's support item number nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Let's see, the next one who has their hand raised is off of phone number nine-two-eight-eight-six-four-nine-zero-nine-zero. If you're here on the phone, star six.
Uh, good afternoon. Um, hi, um, my name is Clifford Sag. Um, I'm a chapter official also with uh Mexican Water Chapter. I'm the Secretary Treasurer. I just wanted, I know um said not to go back and um reiterate some stuff, but I just wanted to call in and um say that um I wanted to talk in um about your agenda number nineteen. Um, I just urge you to support that. And um, like everyone else said, I think that would be beneficial. So, thank you for allowing me to speak. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, let's see here. That, all that I have as far as hands raised, um. Is there anybody else I haven't called on? Mike?
Matt?
Okay.
Matt Leppenin?
Oh, go ahead, Ann.
Thank you. Um, in the interest of keeping this short, I'm Ann Leppenin. I'm the mayor of Bluff and I am urging the commission to approve uh Agenda Item Nineteen on the resolution related to the voting. I don't believe that I could articulate it nearly as well as President Nez did. And all of the points that I intended to make have already been raised. I just would like to add that in Bluff, the early voting and the interpretive services have been very successful. And I appreciate John David Nielsen's um willingness to work with Bluff to make sure that we continue to have the service available. I don't think that there's anything more important in this country at this time than voting rights. We saw that on January sixth. No matter where you stood, voting is an issue. And we want to be sure to ensure to this community that the Navajo voters have reasonable and effective access to voting assistance and voting locations. If there's anything commissioners that the county of Bluff do, please feel free to contact me. Thank you for your service and please pass this resolution. Thank you.
I don't have any comments. Then. Okay, you're, let's see, Mike Bynum, if you wanted to make a comment on here, go ahead, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald, members of the commission and public members. I appreciate the comments and the current concerns that have been expressed and available to talk with people. Uh, a few points of just understanding that we have, uh, subject to approval, but uh currently the, the runway is in use and, and its use is legal and not an issue. It is FAA approved and compliant with FAA requirements um since nineteen eighty-five, actually. And it was an airport runway back in the days when the old Canyonlands Field adjoined it. And so, it has been there um since most of the development has, has happened there. And currently, it's authorized by the FAA for use with permission by the general public. And we've elected not to allow that use. And it is our intent through this development to limit that use in the future to the residents and their guests. Um, the issue, I believe, is that the Planning Commission obviously unanimously approved the subdivision. And we believe that the subdivision that we're trying and asking for and wanting to put in is in compliance with all uh county requirements. And we ask respectfully for your approval of the same. We remain open for further comments and discussions with people. And certainly uh the CCNRs and things that we're developing will impact not only the neighborhood, but the residents around, which include myself, who I'm at the southern, off the south end of, of this uh property by, over by Ken's Lake and, and, and. So, we do have a concern that this be done in a, in a considerate and responsible way in the future. Again, we're voluntarily not using authorized today. And we will continue to um work to make it a part of and, and, and a respectful part of the community and the neighborhood of the future, of which I am a part and will be for time to come. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Just checking to see if there's anybody else that make a public comment.
This is Curtis Yonito from Mexican Water Chapter.
Okay, Curtis, go ahead.
Yate, Ari, Ar, No, So, Da, Is, No, Si, Sai, Do, Commissioners. Aku, She, Is, Kan, Na, Da, E, Blak, Na, Quan, Ha, Na, Eighteen, Eighty, Eh, Da. It, Ta, E, Ya, Di, De, Ne, Be, Za, De, Ya, Ta, De, Ni, Chon, Oh. Hon, Za, Ho, L, J, Sh, Ka. Ako, Di, Ka, Hon, Za, Two Thousand, Uh, Eleven, Se, Ha, Le, Ho, L, J, Si, Ne. Twenty, well, anyway, Ka, To, Ne, Be, Za, Ba, Da, J, Si, Ah, Bi, Ga, Ho. Ko, Di, Na, Ni, Ni, Li, Ki, Da, Ni, In, An, Ta. Ad, On, Le, Na, So, S, J, L, Ta, To, Ki, N, Si, Sohgi, E, Ta, Na, Ta, O. Ad, On, Na, Ni, Ni, To, K, A, Ki, E, Yo, L, Ka, La, E, A, Di, Al, To, Di, Hon, Al, So, Si, De, Di, Ch, Fi, La, No. Ta, Ni, Chi, Inda, Li, Ni. E, De, To, Y, E, Do, Ta, Il, Ta, Da, To, Na, So, Si, Ki, To, So, To, E, Do, Ni, Pe, Ha, Z, N, Da. Ad, On, Da, Be, His, Ah, Ni, Ta, Ni, Legislation, Ban, Da, Ni, Ni, Referendum. E, De, To, Ni, Chi, Il, Ta, Da, Ten. E, Di, Ki, Jo, Ni, Chi, Da, J, L, Ta, Ta, E, Be, His, Ah, Ni, Ta, To, In, Ni, Pe, Ha, Z, N, Do, Le, Ni. At, Ten, Do, T, E, Da. Eben, Na, E, Ya, Di, De. Na, State, Ta, Ta, Ha, Ne, Sohgi, The Settlement, Nenigi, Ba, Wi, Ni, Ni, Ki. Let it continue. Na, Si, E, Ya, E, Ya, Men, Na, To, Ni, Ni, Shi, To, Shi, Yu, Ki, Shi, E, Ah, Ni, To. Pan, Si, Da, S, K, Es, Do, Do, Jo, Si, Da, Li, Ya, Da. Ashi, A, A, Jo, E, Jo, Si, To, Ni, Pe, His, Ah, Ni. E, Ta, E, Support, Shlath, Le, From, Mexican Water Chapter, President. Thank you for allowing me for, to do a comment here. I know that San Juan County was established just a while ago. And then there was a pioneer that established here in eighteen eighty. For that long, I'm thinking that everybody would learn how to speak Navajo clearly. As a Navajo, I wasn't born in eighteen eighty, but I couldn't understand a lot of the laws that's coming in from the state statutes and the county statutes. As far as these voting processing goes, as being on the reservation, it's really hard to do a communication through voting because a lot, a lot of us, we don't, we don't read or write in English and speak. So, for that, whatever modification that's on there, I have read, it sounds possible. And I'm in favor of that and I support it. And I hope the county commissioner supports line item nineteen settlement. Yeah.
Thank you.
This is uh Delegate Herman Daniels.
Okay, let's see, anyone else? Herman Daniels. Herman Daniels. Herman, are you there?
This is uh Council Delegate Herman Daniels. I want to make a comment.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, Jeff, thank you. Thank you very much. And today's a beautiful day here in Manama Valley, Ojito and other areas throughout the Navajo Nation and throughout the state of Utah. We've got some moisture here in um Manama Valley, Ojito and other areas. So, that's a, that's a good sign here. But in first and foremost, I want to thank all the commissioners, Commissioner Mayor Boy, Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Gray Eyes. And also, I'd like to thank Mr. McDonald for facilitating this meeting here. But, um, my name is Herman Daniels, Junior. I serve on the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council. I represent Ojito, Chonto, Tapi, Ken and Nafas, On. Two of my, two of the communities there in Utah, in the San Juan County, which is um Navajo Mountain, Nafas, On and also Ojito. I want to speak um to item nineteen relating to the voting. Today, I, I heard some of my constituents from Navajo Mountain, like Mr. White Hat. Yeah, thank you for speaking um to item nineteen. And uh also, um, I want to speak in support of item ni, item nineteen on behalf of for, for the, the San Juan County residents, the Utah chapters and also Navajo Utah Commission. They're in support of this um item here, item nineteen. So, with that, I'm gonna make it short. Um, I don't want to uh re-echo what uh my colleague, Delegate, Matt Daniel Brown stated. Uh, I just want to reinforce what he um indicated, uh, speaking in support of this um item nineteen related to voting. So, with that said, I, I just, um, I would like to encourage um the leadership, uh, the commissioners to um vote in favor of this uh item nineteen. So, we're, we're doing this for our people here um in the San Juan County on behalf of uh the San Juan County residents and also on behalf of the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council. I, I just want to state that for the record, um, speaking in support of the, the item nineteen relating to uh voting. Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Herman. Okay, there's no more hands that are raised on here. Not seeing anyone with their cameras on. Is there anybody else wishing to make a public comment?
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello?
Where are you living now? Sorry.
Hi, uh, my name is Colleen Benali. I reside in uh Red Mesa, Utah. I'm under uh District Three and I just wanted to make a public comment on um item nineteen. Um, again, uh, I should say um hello to the commissioners, county uh Commissioner, Mary Boy, Gray Eyes and Adams. And everyone there, thank you for um allowing me to speak. But um in benefits of item nineteen, we also forget that we have youth. And in approving this extension, we have up and coming voters that will be um within the next elections and so on and so forth. So, we need to um move forward with this extension and thought of them as well as the others and everybody else that can benefit from this. Um, we weren't yet at a hundred percent within our voting. And I'm sure the goal would be that one day and this would be in support of that. So, I hope the commission um supports item nineteen and um thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll move on, wishing to make a public comment. If so, go ahead and star six, just as a reminder, if it's already been said, um, just be brief in your comments. Darlene, it looks like I let you raise your hand. Go ahead, Darlene Pino.
Thank you. My name is Darlene Pino. I, To, She, In, She, Do, Chi, She, Ba, Si, Si, Chi, Ni, Ki, Ya, Ah, Ni, E, Ya, Da, Si, Chi, Do, To, De, Chi, Ni, Ta, Sh, Na, La. I'm calling from Navajo Mountain. I am the uh, the newly elected chapter vice president and here, Nez, Is, Ah, Na. I, To, Yeah, Mr. Gray Eyes, To, Uh, Ki, Ni, Ha, Ya, L, Ti, Oh, Kon, Ki, Ta, Ha, To, Ji, Sh, Ki. Um, this item nineteen, Ni, Ki, Ya, Um, E, De, In, Gen, Oh, She, Ha, Ta, Sa, Ki, Ni, Ni. I, To, Here, In, Now, Uh, In, Navajo Mountain, Uh, We, In Our Community, We Have A, We Have A Arizona Site and Also The Utah Site. And Then We Have Several Counties That Um, That, That We Participate In As Far As Voting Goes. So, um, Item Nineteen, Uh, We Are In Support Of That. And um, thank you for uh putting, putting that um, that the resolutions and, and the things that you do for us, Mr. Gray. The resolutions and, and the things that you do for us, Mr. Gray Eyes. Koto heh di ne doles. I just want to make that comment that we, we participate in a lot of issues. In San Juan County, related to San Juan County from Natis an Navajo Mountain. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, anyone else? Now that I did receive. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead, did you want to make a public comment?
Yes, my name is Marietta Bedoni. I am calling from Manamit Valley. And a newly elected chapter secretary and treasurer and I just wanted to make a quick comment in support of item nineteen. Just wanted to say too that for the longest time, you see a lot of representation for Navajos. On, you know, in Arizona and New Mexico and you don't find the same with Utah. And with the efforts that are being made with the rural Utah projects. It's really increased the number of votes and it really, it, it shows. That our voices are finally being heard and so I'd just like to say that. Or encourage the commissioners that they go ahead and support the resolution as well. Because I'd say this is more just like a, a first step whereas other parts of the reservations in Utah and New Mexico, they have. They've come a long way and we have yet to get started on a lot of projects to help our people in the Utah district. So Shanatani, Kenneth Mary Boy and Willie Gray Eyes. Yeah, go support the resolution. And I ask for your, your vote and your support as well, Commissioner Adam. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Hello?
Okay, go ahead.
Is this still open mic?
If you've already made a comment.
Oh, no, I haven't.
Okay, go ahead, I got you.
Hello. Shea Daline Redhorse, initiate from the beautiful, beautiful bluffy top. I'm a field organizer of rural Utah project. Chanelle Tara said everything I wanted to say, but I just want, I support the. This extension for the, the voting. It is very important, especially when a lot of our elders would like to participate. They have a, we'll say the voting, the election, so with everything we're doing on that. You know, I think, you know, I ask that you guys support that also. And Shanatani, Willie Gray Eyes, oh, Mr. Mary Boy. It's good to hear you guys here and, you know, I really. Oh, good to hear Mr. Gray Eyes on here, yeah, yeah. And that's all I wanted to say. I'm in support of that too, thank you.
Thanks, Daline.
Hello? Anybody hear me?
Where are you at?
My name is Carol Tallis, I'm calling from Ojetto chapter boundary. I live ten miles north of the chapter and I just want to support nineteen. Initiative, our nineteen. And I work with Ojetto chapter administration from August twenty-seventh to November the thirtieth. I did a home assessment and I visit two hundred and forty-five families. And just looking at that, at the end of our survey, we have over a hundred elders here in Ojetto boundary. So this initiative, it's, it's going to really help our elders to. To help them, you know, voting. And I would say half of them, or they understand English, but as far as when they go to the voting, they, they don't understand it. So interpreters at the voting station is really helpful. And I help them explain and understand, you know, who to, you know, it's up to them who, who to vote for. So thank you, I support item nineteen, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Okay, anyone else? So go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Mary Benali. I'd like to make a comment. I've been trying to get in, I have a brand new phone, so it's kind of hard to work with. But anyway, in support of resolution nineteen, I'd like to make a comment on that. And what everybody said is true. And one thing that really bothers me, I, I worked as a poll official time again on the reservation in Utah site. And one thing that, that's really hard is interpreting proposition and amendments. And sometimes the candidates, and I think that's where we lose out or we vote for the wrong, vote for the wrong things and.
Mary, are you still there? Mary? Okay. What happened to her new phone? Okay, anyone else? Okay, I'm not hearing any. Not seeing anybody unmute themselves. Okay.
Thank you. Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. That'll be longer.
I was looking for thirty-five. Never the last three, we have a huge number of comments, thank you. We will continue. With the, back to the agenda. Consent agenda?
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Mary Boy.
Mr. Chair, before, before we get into the consent agenda, I'd like to make a motion to move item seven. Into the business action item. So the item number seven will come blank. And there will be in addition to business action, it will be twenty under nineteen.
So you're just wanting to hear that later?
Well, that, that can become an action item, not just, just another report that's going to become an action item. Hello?
Yeah, we'll put to that on the end, we'd have to make a motion to change the agenda.
I did make a motion.
So. There's a motion made by Mr. Mary Boy to. Is that approving the, the agenda, the whole agenda?
I don't, I don't see the approval or reading the agenda into the record on the, on the agenda. So I went ahead and made a motion, otherwise if, if it's, if it's in order, if not, read the agenda into the record so we can start acting on it.
We'll hold your motion and reading of the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
So on your agenda, what you have before you now is you. So under the consent agenda items, you've got the check registered for January twenty-seventh through February thirty, twenty-one. And then you've got the check registered for February third through February ninth, twenty-two. Got the February second, twenty-twenty-one commission meeting minutes, you've got consideration and approval. For the purchase of four. Number five, you've got ratification. Understanding between the Utah Department of Technology Services. And then funding public health for vaccine. Number six, you got twenty-twenty-two, twenty-one, Cal Black Appport F A U. S F dash fourteen two S C R R S B A COVID grant funding authorization for nine thousand dollars for COVID-nineteen available. Item number seven, there was comments on the draft. Then enter business action, then you've got Spanish Valley Special Service District, recommendation, approval. Number nine, you've got Skyrim, states, U D V's and P A's. Number ten, installation and approval, other division two span, zoning map. Number eleven, legacy field subdivision, capable. Number twelve, you've got consideration. Overnight accommodations overlay. Zone. Number fifteen, you've got a leather. Legacy foundation grant application. Number fourteen, consideration of approval. Of support for the Black City Store presentation for the creation of the Black Theater trap. Consideration of approval, contact between Utah Department of Health and San Juan Public Health for COVID-nineteen. Money vaccine supplemental support funding of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Item sixteen, consideration of approval. Unity partner project, like with the Utah Department of Health and San Juan Public Health for a total of. Fifty-eight dollars and forty cents. On seventeen, you've got consideration of approval of the level of support. Expansion of the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act and for state representative Doug Owens' House Concurrent Resolution, H C R eighteen. To express Utah support to US Congress to extend and expand. The Radiation Exposure Compensation Act benefits. Number eighteen, consideration and approval of the continuation of Uranium and Radiation Exposure Compensation Act Support Letter to the Navajo Nation Council, Office of the Speaker. Number nineteen, consideration and approval of the resolution statement of intent and position regarding the stipulated settlement agreement in Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission. Et al versus San Juan County et al case number two. Semicolon sixteen dash, or colon sixteen, C V dash zero zero one five four. At J and P for the purpose of the meeting in good faith to discuss the modification and an extension of the stipulated settlement agreement dated February twenty-second, twenty eighteen. Let's see, and that's the last, other than your commission reports, the adjournment at the end. So that commissioners is your agenda for today?
Mr. Mary Boy made a motion. Now that the proposed agenda has been read, we'll go ahead and recognize Mr. Mary Boy's motion. Move number seven. And recognizing presentation and information items will be totally blank. And that's number seven, business action item. All those, is there a second? Second by Mr. Adams, any question, comments? There being none, all there, Mr. Adams?
I just, I just wonder why we're moving the. The comments on the draft plan to an action item. I, I don't quite understand why we're doing that. That was my question.
See, the agenda item was notably noticed as just a comment about force plan and so. It was more of just your comments. If you had changes to the draft plan. Then you could make those comments and changes through it, so there's really. You'd go through if you're fine with it, make them, if you'd like to add more comments, you can make those as well, so it's more of a, kind of a. And so we can certainly have that discussion later on.
Mr. Mary Boy?
Yes. What was that, sir?
The agenda item is comments. On draft force plan. Believed comments are to be made. I read it and there's no, nothing else other than the comment. There's no written.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, I fully understand that. A comment was made by Nick Sandberg during the January's meeting. That's when I tabled this particular item. And you were being absent out of courtesy. I figured that it would be good for you to understand the position. That it puts the county and also the forestry service, the public lands. So that's the reason why we, it came up and maybe that's why Mr. McDonald put it on the consent agenda. So it should be an action item to where we take an action, either we for it or, or vote against it. And so might as well deal with it today, put it on the action item because right now, I'm getting ready to motion to approve the minutes. And like the last time, that means that if I motion to approve the, the minutes, I'm going to approve the whole thing from one to seven. So in this case, we might as well put this number seven on business action so we can act on it with your fully understanding, sir.
So just to clarify, I appreciate your comments there because it kind of helps feel what you're seeing on there. On the, on the pages, on the layout, the consent items are only one through six. Item number seven falls under the recognitions, presentations and informational items. And so that's completely separate from the consent items. And so hopefully that.
But it still can be considered under the action item, right?
You're really taking, yeah, you could, you could take a couple, or your comments on there, we can revise or revise the document itself. It makes more sense under the presentation and informational items because if we get, have your input in it, we want to make sure that we can add that in there before. Have your input in it, we want to make sure that we can add that in there before. We get an up and down. If there's some serious concerns that you have. With Nick's, um, comments on here. Then we would want to. We would want to receive that information from you as well. Before we. Get an official action. This is typically when we, as a cooperating agency, we provide. Comments throughout the year. Um, that's what this is.
Mr. Chairman, we have not.
Go ahead.
Sir, we have not made.
Yes, I'm waiting for you. Instead of.
We have not made a motion to discuss the item.
Instead of discussion, I need a motion.
Matt, can you relate to him that I did made a motion?
Fatigue if you want to.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment? This is Nick.
Yes, go ahead.
I submitted the, the document, the comments in letter format for commission consideration. With the thinking that if the commissioners agreed to those comments. They could sign that letter as an action item today.
There you have it.
And this, this is not the only opportunity the county would have to make comments.
Yeah.
Comments could still be made at a later date during the actual official scoping period. We're now in an unofficial scoping period on the forest plan.
Uh. Thanks, Nick.
Mr. Mary Boy. Your motion is to adopt. Agenda. With. Moving. Number seven. To action item. Right?
Thank you, sir. You are correct.
Okay. Mr. Adams is second. So. Any further changes?
I thought Bruce seconded it.
Correct.
So with the. Motion and. To move item number seven to action item. We'll go ahead and vote on it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three. Opposed, none. Three in favor, zero opposed. The motion carries. The agenda is hereby adopted.
Thank you, sir.
So with that, uh. We will go ahead and consider. Concern agenda which is one, two, three, four, five and six.
Motion.
Motion. And Mr. Adams, uh. Second. Any comment? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So. Three in favor, opposed, zero. So we go down to, uh. What, number eight becomes number seven?
Number eight, we can just keep them in the same order.
Okay.
Since we've got them, our. Agenda management system tabs them all and keeps them as the same. Um, so that's easier for the minutes and things keeping within that.
So with the, uh, okay. Motion carried and. Abending the agenda, we go to business item number eight.
Okay. Business item number eight is the Spanish Valley Special Service District Recommendation and Appointment Approval. Over here, um. Report from the public, report from. The chair. Typically, our process. Is, has been as we, as we suggested. Membership and renewals as well. For seats. We put that out and, um, review. Or have the boards review, sorry. Have the boards review those. To see if they want to change. Membership within those special service districts or. Uh, if there's those willing to continue. With those positions, then they can also opt to do that as well at that time. And then we have the boards. That is a letter of who they recommend. To be appointed to those boards. You have that in your packet. As well as the, um. Overall. List of everybody from those letters of interest. In there, and so. Kind of, I notice I've looked through the process on here, um, and. Especially with their bylaws. The bylaws with Spanish Valley. They really do not, um. Limit the terms, so you continue, um, for as long as you're willing. To serve on this board and we. One member there, I think, has been since the creation of the board, which is pretty awesome that. That willingness to volunteer, but I also pointed out, and I wasn't here during the time, um. You adopted your policies. Where's here for the commission? On here, it kind of goes to and stipulate. How you would work with the local and special service districts. Kind of goes in accordance with. Utah code as well. Has even created these special service districts. It states on here specifically that these boards are independent. Of the county, except that the commission shall. Um, pursuant to that Utah. Seventeen D dash one dash three oh three, make all appointment. To such administrative. Control boards, except for district boards elected by. The public or where otherwise established in the organization's bylaws. Or enabling documents. Each district board shall. The representative. As appointed or assigned. We don't have. Representatives at the, that special service. But do know. That I've been attending those special service district meetings. Um, since the onset of me. Being hired here in the county, so I attend. Every one of those, those monthly meetings as much as I can. There's been. I think two that I haven't been able to make it to. All business conducted by the. Independent. Um, so they're not. So you're not kind of crossing. A boundary, crossing line, crossing lines. Um, joint meetings of the commission members within the district boards. Are encouraged for the purpose of establishing goals and objectives. Um, and this is. Specifically out of your policies, the county commission. Will not direct or attempt to direct the decisions of the special service district board. So it's kind of looking at everything, um, where this was tabled in the past. For Commissioner Grant to be here, so. The public input on this as well. Kind of the only thing that I would often see if I do this is. As far as your recommendation, you're. Uh, approving the special service district recommendations. Being Frank. Um, and Lloyd. And let's see. So we got Frank, Lloyd, and then Mike. Uh, on there was, that's kind of the board's recommendation for. Where you make the motion to deny. Those special service. Recommendations. It doesn't get into an interview process at this time. One of the things to note. Um. Just so that everybody's aware. With this special service district, there are some concerning. Issues that continue. Forward and, and it's unfortunate that. There weren't more, um. Representation in the meetings in the public, because I think. That the public's. And the special service district. It would have been more aware of kind of the serious nature and the issues that surround. Uh, the special service district and the continuation of. The sewer and water. District project. We still have the ones that. We're trying to finalize and close. Which would be kind of odd to change membership during. Those are the bonds when you create. You get them signed and then all of a sudden. A change in leadership or a change in, in structure. Uh, also, there are still some pending. Litigation concerns that. Uh, are still out there with. Uh, the project that we're trying to close up. The project isn't a hundred percent complete yet, which. Is a concern to me, um, losing that institutional knowledge, um, with that. Would be a huge concern for me. Um, and so. Our recommendation, kind of my recommendation as staff would be, you know, either. You're making a motion approving the recommendation or you're denying the recommendation. Uh, if you do deny the recommendation, uh, then I would encourage you to sit with. The special service district, um. And kind of go through, um. The whole entire process at large with both. Uh, bodies there, um. If it's not your willingness to continue with these members.
Motion with the recommendation?
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion with item eight, uh, Spanish Valley Service Board. The recommendation of inserting new names. The names would, uh, go as follow. Youngblood is what they asked for and they came before us. And the only people that know the area and the impact there, of course. Are the people that live there. So I'd like to acknowledge David. And the other one would be Ms. Clark to be the new name on the recommendations for the, uh, resolution.
Okay. There's second to the motion? I'll go ahead and second. I think the, uh, with this. That, uh. Possible the, the, the power of interest. The lawyer should have looked into those. At, uh. Some time ago when the, uh. When this, uh. Plan was being or advertisement was being made. Uh, secondly, I think the. Uh. McDonald's request. Was. Uh. Continuity of. Uh, communication. Understanding. There's already. Three. Peoples that are remaining. On these appointments. Where there should be. Two or three?
Two. People that would remain. There's three positions that are open. You just mentioned. That you'd like to replace, and so we're gonna have to figure out which two you want to replace. On there, but there's. Three positions that are available.
Okay. They're understanding there should be, uh. Still a continuation of the, uh. Continuity there. Uh. Go ahead and support. Second the motion.
So with some clarity. Um, I just want to make sure you're not confused by kind of what the public sentiment is. With, um, the conflict of interest, there's no conflict of interest there that exists within the special service district board. Any, anytime, say, for example, you have the water operator. And you have a board member in the same. Um, typical with the special service district. To get that water operator, so. This is speaking to Lloyd, to get the water operator on the special service district. Uh, there was an R F P that was sent out to the public. At large. Uh, and so any. Anyone that would have wanted to be an operator, the water operator could have applied. And gone through that process. Uh, to be that. And so. When that was approved by the board, the. Lloyd and his company, the youth representatives of the, as the water operator. He recused himself from that decision and made it known. That there was a conflict of interest, and as long as you declare. That that conflict of interest is there and he's. He pulled himself away from the vote. And that, there's no longer a conflict of interest with it. He stated it. Um, and then the board selected his company after that, but there, he declared. He did everything legally that you're required to do. When there is that, that conflict of interest there, so. Just know that. There would have been nothing that the attorneys, the attorneys have been working with us. Um, with the special service district for. Well, ever since the project has, has began and, and had issues and so. At no point in time, uh, has there been a conflict of interest. Everything's been. Stated, it's been opened, public meetings, um. Whenever, anytime that there is a conflict or potential conflict. Those individuals recuse themselves that. You kind of have a difficulty there where you actually have residence in the area. Uh, there's gonna be. Oftentimes where. You know. Things touch their property that they have to. At least acknowledge that there is a conflict that they live on this property or whatever the case is. As long as they do declare and it's acknowledged by the rest of the board members similar to this body. Then they, they've done their due diligence with that conflict and so. Just wanted to point that out. But we do have the two positions. There's three positions that are open. Um, you have mentioned two names. Um, we're gonna have to figure out who you want as that. That final.
With your motion. Mr. Mary Boy. With your motion, uh. Apparently there's. Three vacancy. The only.
Yes, sir.
Two individual.
Okay, so I've, I've, uh, recommended two individuals to be inserted, the name into the resolution to be part of the board. Um, other than that, um. I've not heard any, uh, recommendation. From the group, the group today. So I will leave that in the hand of the, um. Our administrator to consult with the community, the board and the people and see where they. They would like to best fit whomever.
Mr. Mary Boy.
Yes, sir.
Um. Is it possible to retain? Wilson, Lloyd Wilson?
As a member?
Uh.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you, do you have, um, do you have, um? Frank? On board as well, Matt?
So the positions that are up right now, what I mentioned, you've got, um, Lloyd. And you've got Frank. And then. Mike Bynum, sorry, Mike. Space it out. So those are the three positions that are up now, so. If you're replacing two of them. You better either keep Mike, Mike Bynum. Frank or Lloyd. And we could, I mean. We're gonna have to figure that one out. There's not a process clearly that. If you're not accepting their. Uh, recommendation. That next step isn't. Clear of what you would do to select that. Third person. We could send it back to the special service district and have them. Make another recommendation to you.
Um. Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Within my mo, within my motion, I acknowledge the two names, two individuals that was brought up before us by the. A group of people that, uh, highly recommend and, and concerns. And I would also, uh, since I don't know these individuals. Um, Matt, could you? Matt, could you, uh, go ahead and take the, uh, the honor and see. Who is on there and my recognition, my, uh, motion to recognize it as well. Need to use the rubber stamp to go on with whoever that, uh, they would like to recommend to be on the board. There's three, I'm, I, I thought there was only two of them.
There's three. Okay, with that, today I would then reach back out to the special service district.
Just go with the Jew. At this time?
Yeah, and then.
Or totally postpone. Uh, since we're. Against the wall now, um, Mister Maryboy.
Yes, sir.
And it's gonna go back to special service or the plan is on there or.
Special service district.
Special service district.
Okay.
The whole thing. Or table it. And forward it back to the. Spanish Valley. Over, uh, then. Clearly.
It's. It's your call, sir, uh, but my recommendation will still stand.
So two.
So the motion.
Uh, Mister, Mister Chairman, is it out of line if I speak? This is Carolyn Dan.
Mister Adams, has the floor?
My understanding of what we've been asked to do today and in accordance with procedures of the county. Is we make a motion to approve the recommendations of the special service district. Or we make a motion to deny. The recommendations of the special service district. So, um, I think that, that's what we are legally obligated to do, and if we're gonna try and do something different than that. I think anything other than one of those two things is out of order. And if we're gonna, uh, continue to try and do something that really is out of order, I'd like to request that we get a, a legal opinion from our attorney. Before we move forward.
Okay.
But if we wanna do one of those two things.
Mister Chair.
Or deny the recommendation, I think that's perfectly with, within, uh. The procedure of what we're supposed to be doing.
And that follows, that follows your policy that you created is. You adhere what the board wanted to recommend. So you, and that's why I put on here is your recommendation is. Either approving their recommendation or denying their recommendation. If you deny it, it goes right back to them, and you can also put with the denial, just that caveat is that. That's your wish that you strongly recommend these other two members. You can put in there and then let the, let the, the special service district determine that third.
Mister Chair.
Mister Chair, may I speak?
So we're not, this past public comment period?
Mister Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
This is our meeting and we just barely acted on our agenda. And it's not, either one is his fault that our attorney is not present. This is the reason why I always ask that we have a legal individual at the table. And we still don't have that. And.
Alex was here.
To me, it's a very, very simple fix. We're not recommending, we are inserting two names, we're only lacking one. And if need to, we can bring up those names that are interested. And we can insert another name if we need to. Other than that, taking that back to special service district, I, I don't see that. This is our meeting.
You still have Utah code that you have to follow on.
Uh, Mister Maryboy. I guess today is. To accept or deny. Clearly. We can deny what's been. Recommended to us.
Mister, Mister Chair, I'd like to make a note, I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Okay.
Item number, the item that we're discussing.
Good. Second. Vote. No further comment?
Aye.
So did you second it?
Yeah.
Okay, so you seconded it?
Vote, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Two ayes. Mister Adams. Opposed.
Okay, so we'll push this back to the special service district and they're still online as well. Just so you're aware, the, um, attorneys, they have been here. They are bouncing back and forth because yesterday was a holiday and that pushes district court. Ends at Tuesday and so they're, they're going back and forth between district court and now there is no way that they could have gotten out of district court.
Okay. I love that. Going on to Sky Ranch. Sky Ranch Estate subdivision phase two. Mister Scott Barton, subdivision administrator.
All right.
You, you have the floor.
Hey, thanks. Maryboy, Commissioners, Sir Commissioner Gray Eyes and Commissioners. My purpose of being here is, um, the county, we received application for the Sky Ranch Estates subdivision phase two. Uh, that application was received at the end of October of twenty twenty. Since that time, the county staff has, um, reviewed the subdivision. Um, several changes were made with the developer as we went back and forth with the subdivision application. For three months, it was, once we felt it's. The requirements of the current zoning that was, that is in place, we recommend or we place this on the agenda through the San Juan County Planning Commission. Which they. Considered at their February seven. And approved this, um, subdivision phase two. Uh, there's been some questions with the public about lot sizes, um, lot sizes. The county requirement of ten thousand eight hundred square feet even with the. There was also some things brought up about buffer zones at each end of the runway, none of those zones exist in our current zoning. So. As staff, as we, as we. Review this, uh, we feel that it does meet the requirement of current zoning in place and we. Um, so it is now on your agenda for your approval. I, I believe the developers are online as well with our specific questions, we may be better at answering them. Like them to weigh in on. And the way I understand this is it is a yes or a no. It's a, it's not a, if, if it were to be tabled, they would come back with the same, the application wouldn't change, so. If it is a, if it is a no, I think. With the developer, if you have specific that you want them to look at, maybe give them an opportunity to explain before it's. If, if that is what your.
Good. The board, can you? For what you're talking about?
The subdivision or?
Yeah.
So in your packet, there's two, there's, there's a plat as well, um.
Do you want me to pull it up? So you can see it on your computer, Commissioner?
I don't have a large scale plat, but I do have, I mean, I've got eight and a half by eleven, so.
Let me get to it.
Is this the one?
No, it's.
Right here. Okay, it should be on your computer monitor.
There's, it's three pages to the plat. Though they, and they tie together this way, there's. The night may be easier, I've got separate sheets, so they're kinda tied together, there's. This one ties right here. So there's, there's housing here in this little circle and then the runway comes this way and extends down here. So there's.
Air, airstrip?
The airstrip runs right, right along here. And they have a, they have a. Um, two hundred and fifty foot easement that, that is the runway that runs along this center here.
A lot of comments were made, right, and regarding the.
Yeah, so the airport, the airport had their FAA license was, um, has been in effect since nineteen eighty-five. So they've had, they've had their, the operate, the airport was in operation. Which I think predates most of the housing in that area. So that's, that's where. Um, we're not necessarily going back to nineteen eighty-five to consider the airport, the airport has been there. This is a subdivision application that we've received.
Their motion to approve or deny?
My motion to approve.
Mister Adams' motion to, uh, approve?
Oh, stuck in, um, mute, yeah, second. Now that's for the discussion, right?
No, he just made a motion to approve.
Ooh.
Motion to.
They're up to determine to acknowledge that.
Can you hear him? He was talking.
Mister Chair.
Mister Maryboy.
Where is this, uh, airport located at?
Um, it's in Spanish Valley.
Spanish Valley. Right in the middle. Of residents.
Oh my gosh, um, I will, I will, I will back out on my second on that one then, if it's approval, for discussion I would. But if it's for approval, I. Maybe you can second that.
There was a lot of comments, wait. Sky Ranch. Development. Guess the airport was. First established. Way before. Residential housing. So right now. Their plan is to, uh. Um. Adjacent to the runway. They will develop housing lots and build homes. The question that is raised of. Our. Health and safety. If a plane crashes. Into some of the residents. We know who's gonna be at fault.
Mm-hmm.
Were comments that were made.
Who, who would be at fault?
That a lot of these. Safety measures are not in place. In fact, somebody said, I live, the airport airstrip runs. For the northeast. And southwest.
Yes, sir.
Three airplane hangers. Along the, um, adjacent to the airstrip. And a comment was made that. Somebody lives. Mister Calvin Walker, I believe, was at the end of the airstrip. There's no safety measure. If a plane doesn't take off and keep, continued to run, what happens?
I've been down there, I've been to the airstrip.
Yeah, I've been there too, yeah.
I think if it takes off, it'll just continue to run out into the field. If not a home at the end of the field. So it would, it would just.
They're going, the runway is from there. Southwest to going. Northeast.
I guess, I guess it can go either way.
Kind of angled from southeast to northwest.
And it, and I, the, the intent, maybe more, maybe. My understanding was homes were built, there was a, be a, a hangar underneath. A home, but maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
Yeah, they haven't talked about, um, yeah, I don't know the exact configuration that the home will be, but yeah, I think there is some desire.
I don't think that's a requirement, is it?
Uh, yeah, they need the lot, the lot size requirements of the plat, and that's what I say, I, you know, I. You know, the concerns that are raised on each end of the runway, you know, we recognize those concerns, but we don't have anything in our current zoning that. Requires a buffer area. At least have their FAA license.
But there you know.
Also. Not a private, not a private runway.
No, a private, this is.
Runway, then you.
Mister Chair.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, Mister Maryboy.
Mister Chair, uh, we're talking about safety issue and, and all of this, I recuse myself in, in the seconding the motion. For the record, now, what I would like to do is maybe do a substitute motion. And send this back to the, uh, to the safety expert regarding the, the location of the airport. And also recognize the residential zoning. Maybe that way we'll have a clearer picture of making that decision, uh, with each other. I would, uh, make that substitute motion. Give it back to the planning commission.
So, let me just try to hold.
Mister John.
We don't have a safety expert that would look at this, all we're. All you can really apply, so, and this was kind of made for the planning commission as well is. Recognizing that there's an airport there, the airport's already been approved, it's in existence no matter what you do. Um, it's gonna continue as a proper airport. Because it's. Because it's that, it's an FAA approved property, so it exists. So really what you're looking today is whether or not this plat. That they meet our zoning ordinance, that's all, all they're looking at to, and we can totally work with. The private owner, um, to try to mitigate any of the safety concerns, but really what, what we're looking at today with this plat map approval process. Is whether or not it meets code, um, as you look at, at chapter seventeen, six oh three. Very specific on what, you know, what you're allowed to do, what your approval is. We can't get into the airport ramifications or anything like that, uh, because that's the private property owner responsibility. When we look at zoning, um, and there was a comment from the public as well, back in twenty eighteen, we made these promises. But that was also under a different zones, just then, the Spanish Valley ordinances have been approved, was allowed to a higher density. So the proper, as they went in and, this was with the planning commission, that was really all you can weigh in on. Is whether or not it meets San Juan County ordinance. You know, the lot sizes, we've looked over the multiple instances, do, uh, meet those changes, your ordinance. If you look through here, you know, all the things that were mentioned, it's water, um, you know, that water concern will come later, that's something that. To reconcile themselves, the, the owner will have to go, um, meet with the special service district and apply. For the water, if he hasn't already done so for these properties, but first and foremost, it's just stop dividing his land in accordance with our ordinance. So really, we're looking at, does it comply with our ordinance or not? That's really the only question that he can answer today, if it does comply with our ordinance, there's nothing in here that allows you to deny it. If it, if it needs to.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did I hear you say it's a section seventeen?
Chapter seventeen dash twenty-seven eight, dash six oh three.
Thank you for that clarification, Mister Chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
That, that particular comment there that's being brought to us clearly states that the, um, the airport does not belong to the county. Or the state or any other entity as, as government, government. It belongs to the impacted people, just like Navajo oil and gas. Navajo oil and gas is a section seventeen to where it doesn't belong to the Navajo Nation, the state, or any other chapter, it belongs to the impacted area. So therefore, the local people just made some comments, it was a section seventeen, they're following the right order as it is, again, without. The, um, uh, the help of our attorney. That's how I understand section seventeen.
It sounds like a different chapter or seventeen, this is the land use law in state code. Um, land use law doesn't give any rights to, um, to affected parties, it's mostly the individuals that own. This is an owner acknowledgement for the certificate.
Mister Adams.
I'd like to request if we have an attorney online that, that he give us some advice.
Request for legal opinion, advice?
He was on earlier, I'm, I know Kendall's not there.
I talked to him earlier, he. He had to go back and record.
Can, can we table the item until we have an attorney online?
Kepper.
Yeah.
There's a, uh. Mister Adams, uh. Temporarily table until a legal. Uh, attorney can respond to our, or give us an advice on this issue. Uh, is that? Your favor, Mister. Mayor Boy.
I stick with my motion, sir. Give it back to the planning commission. To consult with the experts, that way they can deal with the expert and give us all the data by the time they're done.
As, as I understand. I believe either the planning zoning committee has. Identified those issues before. The safe and healthy of the, uh, the public. And was forwarded to. The owner. But no response was made, no improvement in planning of whatever is being, uh, that were issued. It might just be more continuation of that, uh, question.
Do you, Scott, do you, are you aware of any that are put on there before?
Not, not that I'm aware, no, the, the airport itself was. In place before any conditional use requirement was in our zoning.
Okay.
And so, what I understand, it predates any, there, there is a conditional use now in our zoning, in our, in our umbrella zoning, not the new zoning that's, that's. That's affected, that we're, you know, that we're doing this now, but the umbrella ordinance does have a conditional use. Um, requirement for an airport.
But not back then, so.
But this was, this predated this.
And this would be all grand, so the airport's grandfathered in. When it was approved, and it continues for to be grandfathered in, um.
Planning commission has, has approved this, so I don't know what.
Yeah, we did take this, so last Thursday, this was on the planning commission. For recommendation to you, and it, it came out as a favorable recommendation to the, to the commission. As that, we certainly table it until we get an attorney in here.
So I'll go ahead and second Mister Adams' motion to temporarily table until we get. Uh, legal opinion on it. So with that, uh, like to go ahead and call for the question. At this time and say, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mister Mayor Boy?
Aye, opposed.
Can I say a two to one?
The vote is two in favor, one opposed. Motion carries, next.
Okay. This inhers your consideration and approval of the revision of Spanish Valley zoning map, this is by Scott as well.
Okay, yeah, so this, um, iteration is a revised Spanish Valley, San Juan County Spanish Valley zoning map. This was discussed, um, quite a bit with the planning commission, which revised the map and then held a public hearing. Where members of the public expressed, um, nothing but support for the map. This version of the map, have anybody opposing this, um, this version of the map at the planning commission meeting, so they made a recommendation. To the county commissioners to approve this, this zoning map, this, um, responded to several members of the public. Um, issues and concerns they had with previous version of the map, um, and this, this addresses those concerns with split zoning and. Uh, some of the zoning that had changed, where they had bought commercial and, and then it was changed to residential, um, with the last map, so this map addressed those concerns and also. Maintains the gravel pit zoning that was required by state law, that maintained and stayed the same.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion, we approve the, the Spanish Valley zoning map.
Mister Adams' motion to approve. Spanish Valley zoning map. Is there a second to the motion?
I will second.
Thank you. Second by Mister Mayor Boy. Any question or comment? Mister Barton also added the background information, so. Uh, the planning zone. Uh, approved, recommended, so with that, we will go ahead and call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Aye, three in favor, opposed, zero. Next. Thank you, Mister Barton.
See the next one, we've got Legacy for the subdivision phase two, that's by Scott.
Next, yeah, so this, this is a subdivision, um, this is in La Salle, Utah, this is, uh, phase one of this subdivision was approved in January. Uh, actually came before this board in February, on February fourth of twenty twenty. This, uh, this expands, the, the first case. Opposing in addition to twenty-one lots. All of them meet their, their lot requirements, they're all, uh, just old, ties. Um, they'll have either shared wells or, uh, legal wells and septics for this subdivision.
Have you heard the, uh, the background information, do I hear a motion? Mister Adams' motion to approve?
Second for discussion?
Second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favors, or Mister Adams?
I just. Uh, we've had a number of residents out to La Salle that are concerned about the water table and the existing wells that are going down. Do you have any idea, is this subdivision located in an area where if they drill more wells, there's a possibility of the water table. Decreasing it even more?
Yeah, I don't know a whole lot about the water, but yeah, there is, there is a, that possibility for sure, um, there is, there is a number of citizens who have expressed concern. They've expressed that concern too, the planning commission, about this specific subdivision.
So do you know, uh. Uh, when they drill those wells, I guess there's an opportunity for anybody that's concerned about the water table going down to address that to the state of Utah. These are water wells or drinking water or whatever.
Yeah, that's my understanding, is all the water, the, apply for their well permit through the state, and the state probably notices that, gives everybody in the area the opportunity to. I think to, um, comment, to comment, or even to, to basically, I think the way I understand is they get in line, because you, you have. Need a word right now, but, um, if it does show, if it does affect their well, then they. They, if they commented during that, that time period, then they have the opportunity to. Take action, I guess, on, on that well, or however that, however that works, the state, I guess the point of the state manages that whole process, the county's not really involved.
So the point I'm trying to make is a clarification to anybody that might be looking. You're concerned about the water on your property and. This subdivision meets all the requirements for lot size and et cetera. The county really doesn't have a process to deny the subdivision because of water, because all of the water is. Um, is regulated by the state, not the county.
Right.
So people need to be aware, but when that well is applied for, that's their time to, to, um, make a comment to the state agency, not the home.
Correct, that's the way I understand it, and that was the planning commission's discussion as well, is they, the water was out of their hands, it was with the state, so.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any further discussions? Since I, the, uh, the question was. Mister Adams raised the possibility of depletion of underground aquifer. And affecting individual wells. I don't know how they, maybe, uh, stop the depletion until, uh. The, the underground aquifer is finished, recharged. That's up to the state to decide, so. So with that, uh. You were made, I guess, uh. Uh, number six. There's a motion, second. If there's no more further comments, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye also. Opposed? Three in favors, there are opposed, motion carries. Number seven, um, number twelve.
So this one here is consideration of the application of overnight accommodations overlay, reason?
Who's, uh?
That's me as well.
Wow, right?
Full day. Almost done with me here, so. Uh, this is the first in a three-step process, so you see, uh, an application, uh, for this. It's a modification to the zoning map that will make this overnight accommodations overlay apply to a specific property in Spanish Valley. Um, the applicant wants to do a, um, glamping campground. Uh, with geodetic dome type structures, um, that people would rent and, and camp. Um, those structures, so this is, this will come to you again, if, if approved, then he comes and, and gives the planning commission his other details and follows as their. They have to address, um, and then, and, and come before the planning commission again with those details a little more hammered out. And then they would come to here again for you to attach this overlay to that specific property for that specific project. And then they would, they would enter a development agreement, so there's those three steps, two of them come to the county commissioners with a recommendation from the commission. The third step is approved by the planning commission once you give them the approval, so this, this is that first step, it's just to make this overnight accommodations overlay apply.
Okay. Um, motion, is there a motion?
Motion for discussion?
Second. Question now opens. Mister Mayor Boy motion, taken by Mister Adams. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Mister Adams?
I'm wondering where the property is in relationship to Spanish Valley.
Hey, so, so yeah, so the, the property itself, um, is right along highway one nine nine.
Is that a commercial zone right now?
It's in the highway commercial. It's in the highway commercial zone, yeah, and that's where this, that's where this overnight accommodations overlay applies, and the new zone applies in the highway commercial zone. It lists in the highway commercial zone, lists uses that are subject to this overnight accommodations overlay and commercial campgrounds fall into that list. So that's why, that's why he's applied for this.
Tell me approximately where the.
Well, Saint Dean's town is it?
Yeah.
It's directly across the highway.
Right across from Saint Dean?
Yeah, it's it used to be the, I think it was, there's a. On the. On the pole right there in Old Willie's Jeep, and it's, and there's a.
It was kind of a junkyard.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly.
This would improve it considerably, wouldn't it?
So they would remove that pole from use and re-und built this, clean up, clean up the current use.
How many units?
Right now, we're proposing. Seven of these of these domes, they're four hundred and thirty square foot. Yeah, exactly, oh yeah, I mean, they did, they were asked the question, the in the material that they submitted, it was white, but they think they are, they're gonna do some sort of a. An earth color. Covering instead of a white color. But again, that that there'll be more details the next time they come with their additional plan, they'll have, they'll have some more addition. Additional details, so.
That's all the questions I have.
Any question?
Call for the question.
Hey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eight. Three in favors, there are opposed, motion carries, next.
Okay, the next one. Let's see, we've got a letter of support for the Swanson Legacy Foundation grant application. This one will be presented by our library, our assistant library director. Here in LaSalle. Kayla, are you there?
Motion for approval.
Yes, I'm here, I just had to unmute my computer. We are in the process of doing. Converting the basement into a co-working space. And we think we've had a lot of people traveling through that have. Had interest in a space where they could make a conference call or. Work for a couple of days while they're traveling through this area. So there's been a lot more. Request and demand for this, and we've already, you guys were good enough to already. Write one letter of support for us for the first grant that we got that is covering most of the construction. This is just a supplemental grant that we are applying for. To complete the project, and so we were just hoping that you, the county commissioners would. Sign a very similar, you can use the same template or whatever. Letter of support that we could use for this application. Does anyone have any questions?
Recognize Mister Mayor Boy's motion to approve. Taken by Bruce Adams.
Discussion.
Discussion, is there any? Mister Adams.
Kayla is, when when this co-working innovation center. Is established. Is there any charge to the people when they come in and and use the facility, or is it free of charge because it? Because of the grant money we get?
That's a great question, so it is going to have a charge attached to it, it will have. And also. But but at the same time, the whole library, the upper floor of the library is open and available for anyone free of charge. This co-working space is actually. Part of a plan to kind of rejuvenate some of their resources for the library funding. Our budget, you know, we have severely cut back our budget and. To try to start building our reserves again in case we have any building issues or anything, and this was a plan that the. Some people in the the business developing section of the county came up with to help. Increase our revenues a little bit, just to, so that we wouldn't have things be quite as tight as they are. And it's a space that we will not, we won't have librarians down there all the time, so the cost thing means that. The people who utilize that space, it's more specialized for having meetings and things like that. We're aiming to do. A different price for like people within the county, get a much better rate than those traveling through. Well, you know, a better rate, a reduced rate, and we're gonna try to make it very economical to use, but. Part of that is to bring in resources, increase our resources. And then another aspect of that is that because we don't have librarians down there policing it, the fact that somebody has to sign up. And submit their their payment information and stuff means that. Where the space is more secured against having things ruined and. Broken and demolished, and we'll have some pretty nice equipment, you know, not anything super fancy, but. A few things that are gonna make it so that you can do a a business conference meeting and, you know, some electronic stuff and all that, so that protects our. Investment, but it also is designed to help increase our revenue some.
Yeah, I think it's good, I know that there will be some. You know, the depreciation on the equipment, the depreciation on the building, the. Like power, water, sewer, all of those kind of things, so I agree with with you and the board. There needs to be a minimal cost to people who are using this facility.
Thank you, did anybody else have any questions?
A good program. Thank you. Hello?
Yeah. Just a second. Nothing here, let's blow. I just called for the question.
Call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed, zero, three in favors, zero opposed.
Thanks, Kayla. Okay, the next one on the agenda is consideration and approval of the support letter to Bluff City Historic Preservation. Association for the creation of the Bluff River Trail. This here is just another support letter, this one is to actually go to Bluff City Historic Preservation. Association, just acknowledging something that you guys had supported back in October.
Motion to approve.
Mister Adam, motion to approve. Letter of. Second by Mister Mayor Boy. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye also, three in favor, opposed, none.
Okay, the next item on here is consideration and approval of the contract between the Utah Department of Health and San Juan Public Health for COVID nineteen. San Juan County Vaccines, supplemental support funding of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. This is for the public health department, so far, we've just been relying on kind of our COVID funds to. Handle the vaccination, finally, we were able to get this contract with the state of Utah to come out with the appropriate fund. So we have fifty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Towards either vaccine education, vaccine awareness, or the vaccinations themselves, that process, not the vaccine, but the process.
Number fifteen, there's a motion.
There's a motion.
Mister Adams, motion.
Second.
Fifty-eight thousand eight hundred. Is there a second?
Matt, let him know I seconded it.
Okay, we got it.
Okay. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Three in favors, zero opposed, motion carries, sixteen.
Okay, this one's consideration and approval of the COVID Community Partners Project contract with the Utah Department of Health. And San Juan County Public Health for twenty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents. This is kind of, this contract here with the Utah is kind of a continuation of our COVID nineteen. Awareness as well as helps with the tracing, kind of everything that we're. Trying to do for mitigation of the spread and effects of COVID nineteen.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay, second.
Mister Mayor Boy's motion, second by Mister Adams. Any comment? Call for the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye also. Opposed. Three in favors, zero opposed. Motion carries, seventeen.
Okay, this one here is consideration and approval of a letter of support for extension and expansion of the Radiation Exposure Compensation Act. And for the state of Utah, Representative Doug Owens' House Concurrent Resolution. Which is HCR nineteen to express Utah's support to U.S. Congress to extend and expand. The Radiation Exposure Compensation Act benefits, these expire in twenty twenty-two, and so we have both. Two different avenues that we're approaching, one from. To the state of Utah to express that to the feds, to continue, as well as we have one to the Navajo Nation, item eighteen. To go back to the Navajo Nation, thanking them for their. Their continuation request to the federal government as well to extend that. Commissioner Gray, I don't know if you wanted anything to add to this?
Let's just. Plain and simple. It will expire to twenty twenty-two. So we start, we have to start. Recommending notices, letters of support to entities of which all over the country. Because we're not, it will be hundred percent, this is the needs of those. Uranium mining and other related issues, so that would be my statement. So, and nothing. I believe Dr. Rock will comment it on support for these. Multi-tomes, Dr. Rock is from multi-tomes. Thank you. Any other statement?
I agree a hundred percent with you.
That's right, me too.
Yeah. So with that, all those in favor say aye, is there a motion?
There was a motion.
I'll move and ask. A motion and also Mister Adams second my motion, so keep the record straight, thank you. You guys caught me off guard. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye also, so opposed, eight. Okay, three in favors, zero opposed, motion carries. Eighteen, similar.
Motion.
Letter of support, so Mister Adams' motion. Second.
Second.
Okay.
Which letter is this?
The Speaker of the nation.
Eighteen, Commissioner Mayor Boy.
If there's no.
My wifi, how, which is, which one is this?
Eighteen.
To the Speaker.
To the Speaker of the legislator?
Of the Navajo Nation.
Okay. All right. Aye.
Aye also, opposed, eight. Three in favors, zero opposed. The last one, nineteen. Or is there a twenty?
There was a twenty.
Oh, yeah.
And then we. So on nineteen, this one here is. The consideration and approval of the resolution statement of intent. And position regarding the stipulated settlement agreement in Navajo Nation Human Rights Commission at all. Twenty at all. Page number two, colon sixteen, dot two, dash, zero, zero, one, four, four. GMP for the purpose of meeting in good faith, best among. And extension of the stipulated settlement agreement dated February. Second, two thousand and eighteen, Commissioner Gray, is this one is yours?
Well.
Motion with a comment?
Mister Kenneth Mayor Boy, Commissioner Mayor Boy's motion, taken by Mister Adams.
Comment.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair and members of the our county staff. Along with the Mister McDonald and Commissioner Adams, sure do appreciate this particular item, but as you know, that the. The Navajo Nation President and others have called in their lending support for our approval, I've. Been on this particular item for quite some time and let did some research, and I I'd like to commend. John David. You have done a great, great job, there is nothing negative that I could say that you've done. I I wanted to personally sit down with you and discuss all the highlights of what needed to happen. But our attorneys got involved in it and everything just went out of whack, I was never filled in on what the discussions were and that's if I get in touch with our attorney. So that never happened, but nevertheless, it's here now, and I just wanted to say thank you very, very much of. I really, really appreciate the work that you put into this, and a lot of people are very happy with what they've have done during the election. And I just hope that we continue to do do so, and I believe that a recommendation was made by one of the. Comments today is to hit every ra- radio spot. I think that's a great idea, we need to hit all the radio spots in San Juan County. People only listen to KNDN. So many requests was made to the county and those working with KNDN were denied. So that shouldn't be, we need to work with KTNN and KNDN, and I believe there's KRTZ that was recommended as well. And there's a youth radio station that comes from Toyota that covers most of the area in San Juan County as well. I think those resources should be recognized to through this, and I I appreciate that we're unable to. Write again and hopefully that will work better and make a better future for our citizens in San Juan County. And I just wanted to say that, and thank you very much, and I call for the questions, sir.
Comment, Mister Adams? Comment, uh, Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I'm trying to look through the agreement now and maybe Mac and John David can remind me. Uh, did we decide to extend this one forty or would we want to see how well it worked? And possibly if, if the county clerk was, was, uh, provide evidence that it was working, that, that would, that time period would no longer be required in the, in the agreement? I can't remember for sure.
So I can answer that. There's two places.
Two, Donald?
Yeah, so two places in the revised agreement in here that conflict with one another. Um, on page three, it says that the clerk auditor shall continue through the twenty twenty-four election
Yeah.
to open primary and general election date, pulling places located on or close to the Navajo Nation, and it continues to pursue through the language. And that goes to the end of the document, about page eight. It says the procedures and services detailed above, meaning everything back from fourteen backwards, um, shall be in place through at least twenty forty general election, and so there's two conflicts.
So is the red line document provided by Kendall?
So, no, this red line document was, I believe, provided by Liz.
Hmm.
So. Yeah, this wasn't provided by our attorney at all. Yeah, our.
Page three, say.
So.
How, the year?
Page three on here mentions on item A one is continuing through the twenty twenty-four election. You see that?
Twenty twenty-four, yeah. Oh, yeah, I remember that. The other one, uh, page eight is twenty-four.
Page eight has twenty forty, so there.
And fourteen and fifteen.
Yeah.
So if, uh, if we were to put twenty forty on page three, it would be consistent.
Correct.
Or twenty twenty-four on page eight?
Right.
Twenty twenty-four.
Either way.
Either way. Just need to make it consistent. I thought we had kind of agreed to go like to twenty twenty-four and then if there was not satisfaction on the part of the Navajo people, we would, we would revisit.
If we come to agree on everything.
Yeah.
And this, uh, court order would be questioned.
Right.
Yeah. That's, that's what I believe is that we're trying to do.
Right.
Is not be in position by this court order anymore, sometimes shortly down the road.
Right.
Twenty forty is just imaginary. It's a projection. So. Okay. Is that?
That's the only question I had was the conflict between the dates, and I thought we had kind of agreed to go to twenty twenty-four and then if we need to revisit the document, we could.
Yeah, the other one that's pushing us is March third. If we don't come out with any agreement and approval. Then we have to go to the church and say, yeah. And the church might kick us in the butt and say, hey, do this one hundred years.
I just recommend that we, we use the date twenty twenty-four in lines fourteen and, and fifteen on page eight.
Okay.
To make the document consi- consistent.
Yeah. Yeah, me. Even, even.
Yeah.
One of the things Commissioner found in?
Yes.
The, um, so I was just making sure we follow everything so we can make the changes to that, um, settlement agreement. It will still have to go through the clerk order, or clerk auditor for approval as well. One of the things on here that just on the resolutions itself where, um, you're requesting for representation to secure, um, Stephen Booz and/or David Irvine. Uh, there are some conflict of interest that we cannot get past.
I think it's contingent on if we do not approve, that will.
So.
If we prove that there's go for the discussion.
So if you approve the settlement agreement or the? Okay, so if you approve the settlement agreement, because in here it, it reads to me that I need to do this immediately. I would immediately have to get them as representative and legal counsel as soon as you pass this resolution. And so there's nothing in there that has a contingent based on, um, whether John David approves it, whether our attorney approves it.
If that's the case, then there's a question being raised was, is Mr. Booz still a lobbyist with Navajo Nation? Apparently there's no contract, so.
So there's not that one, but I think some of the advisement that we've received from our attorney that there are still some issues. I know that we, um, we continue, I believe, in another settlement, pay him when he filed suit against the county, so we're paying for him, yet we would hire him to represent us. Uh, those two, um, run in conflict with one another.
Yeah.
So.
If that's the issue, then it goes to Irvine, I believe, there both are just learn in election law.
Yeah, so with Irvine, my understanding is that he represents either one of the commissioners or both commissioners in previous cases, and so there would, under what our attorneys have mentioned, that there's a conflict there as well with those. The hiring of an attorney was really, um, the county attorney's position, and so there's nothing that I can do or you can do, um, where it's up to our county attorney to to do that. That's his elected capacity.
So that's part of state law.
It's part of state law, well, and it's behalf of his client, which would be the county
Yeah.
in its entirety, which is according to state law. And so there's, with that, you know, we can certainly strike that language out of the resolution. And let it continue forward, um. But I know that that's definitely one of those issues that we have with the resolution. And then we do, just so we do have our attorneys, one attorney maybe present, so I don't know. I haven't seen both of them yet. If there's any questions, we'll turn them.
Do you want a substitute motion?
Yeah, either, yeah. So we've got the one motion on the table. Well, no, John David, do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Or is motion to discuss? Did he?
Adam, second.
Yeah, but I'd like to make a sub- that was for discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
I'd like to make a substitute.
Okay. Mr. Maryboy, did you follow the discussion?
Aye, it's coming in choppy, choppy. Um, what's, what's the substitute motion?
The, uh, the question came up, uh, the motion was, uh, made, second, uh, to approve and for discussion. And we did discuss, and the, Mr. McDonald brought up the, uh, the question whether the, uh, uh, consistent for consistency of the date on page three of the, uh, underline red line document indicates twenty twenty-four. On page eight of the red line document indicates twenty forty. In order to have consistency on the date, we need to go and change twenty-four on page, not change twenty-four on page three, but change twenty forty to twenty twenty-four on page eight.
Okay, um, with that, the.
The next question, Mr. McDonald brought up was the, uh, whether to, uh, release attorney and hire either Mr. Booz, Steve Booz, or, uh, Mr. Irvine from Salt Lake to be the attorney. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's, that's the question that we encountered. In order to do that, it is, uh, elected position. And I don't know exactly how if we just literally say hire a attorney for the county, it'd be like, uh, an independent attorney, not elected. So the question is, how do we deal with it in my mind?
Yeah, so my recommendation would still be keep it where it's at, um, under, so you, it falls under our county attorney through his elected right that the case law presented in the resolution, um, there's some disagreement with, uh, the actual meaning uh, of that, um, in the resolution, and so to me, it's keeping it where it's at, but it's more not necessarily adoption of the resolution, it's more of coming to a consensus of what's needed in the future and what our county attorney and our elected clerk auditor's responsibilities are, but sending emphasis to them, and you heard loud and clear today from, from several members of the public, several members of our chapter, chapter representation, uh, as well as the Navajo Nation in itself. Keeping in place those things that have benefited and helped out during the election, and that's the, um, that's kind of as we've seen some of the changes as we've improved the process, I think it's important to to point out and continue that we're trying to improve our election process. And to try to, to be, um, you know, more, just getting, listening out to more of our, our public through different means, whether it's advertising on the radios, um, you'll notice in the settlement we advertised, it was required for us to advertise only from one station here. As we got into the election process, we heard from those of our public saying they were only that radio station only broadcasts to part of the Navajo Nation, not of Utah. And so we started advertising both. And with the polling stations, like, hey, we need more polling stations without COVID. Uh, because of COVID, we can't have the election process. Allow people to come in. It's keeping with those changes, which is what's not in this, this, the red line document is, is the fact that interpreters, you heard, um, Mary Benali mentioned on the interpretation is if you, if you hold an interpreter at Arizona, Flagstaff, Arizona, that interpretation is a lot um, what is actually taking place in Utah side of it, but also and, um, knowing and understanding how Utah, how the Utah Navajo speak, different dialects there, the propositions, and when it's a different amendment or different item in the ballot, it's important about that, that Utah interpretation. So I was trying to get that information in, with a recommendation to our clerk auditor, so they can, in that negotiation. And, you know, negotiate those terms forward. But when you look at the resolution, well, the resolution doesn't cover everything that we want, um, it's, it's much more than, than what resolution that statement, um, provides for you.
So, um, Mr. McDonald, is that the substitute motion that Mr. Adams made?
Yeah, to change those dates. Section four in the, in the resolution itself. I'll take care of those. Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, do we?
I would move to change the date so it'd be consistent with page three on page eight of the agreement to twenty twenty-four. And then on the resolution itself, just strike section four because I think that's, uh, that would be illegal for us to do.
Okay, well, um, you're the motioning party, so you really don't need to make a substitute motion. You can just recognize it through your motion, then it can be part of the, um, the legal document, and I will second that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
I think, um, interpreter is really, really important. It's very, very important. That's one of the link, uh, weak parts. I think that's what really messes things up is because we have a really, really bad interpreters. We had a public here not too long ago, um, Rebecca brought, uh, an elderly woman that she called Grandma. And that lady just stammed everybody in San Juan County to hell. But the interpreter interpreted wrong. Her daughter, the one that had to re- re- restate the, the information that she was bringing. So the interpreters are really, really bad. Thank you. Paul for the question?
Hey, Alders, and please say aye.
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 Opposed? Two in favor? Zero opposed, one abstained?
Who abstained?
I did.
You have one more.
We have two, so you had the, when you modified the agenda early on, Dave, this morning, you moved the, item number seven to the end.
Twenty-one.
Nick's was a comment on the draft forest plan. Nick is here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As I mentioned earlier, the Forest Service is currently in an unofficial scoping period for the draft forest plan. And we're not sure when the official scoping period will begin. But the Forest Service is currently accepting public and agency comments on the draft plan. And these, any comments made during the unofficial period would also be considered during the official period. So, there's an opportunity to put in comments now as well as, if we desire, during the official comment period. I'll just mention that, uh, short, can you, can you hear me all right?
Matt, hello?
Is there a problem with the audio?
No, I didn't hear you.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, now, now I can hear.
Okay. In the forest plan, there are planning components, including goals, desired conditions, objectives, standards and guidelines, and management approaches. And most of the comments in this letter before you are directed to a specific standard or goal or desired condition or a management approach. And that's the symbols. You see in the, in the letter before you, for instance, STO one is standard O one under groundwater dependent ecosystems. So, many of the comments in the letter before you would add a consideration of mitigation of impacts through some of the statements that are made, rather than using a one-size-fits-all prohibition or restriction on a certain action or a certain use in a certain area. Though that consideration of mitigation may avoid or lessen an impact that may allow that practice to be suitable in a certain area. Now, one example would be in the groundwater dependent ecosystems and wetlands has a standard stating that no new road or trail development should be authorized. But if we would, we would change that to read that no new road or trail development would be authorized. But allowing a consideration of appropriate mitigating measure. I think that would be a more reasonable statement. Another one would be in the Elk Ridge geographic area, which has a road density, miles of road per square mile limit, without consideration whether, whether a new road would be appropriate or not. Another part of that states that no new roads would be constructed that impact cultural resources. And I think there, the mitigation that could be added would be to state that no new roads would be allowed, which after mitigation would not impact cultural resources. So, there may be certain situations where the mitigation may be appropriate. Other comments are more specific to livestock grazing. There was one prohibition on no new water developments in contour furrow areas, regardless of whether the new water development would contribute to erosion or not. So, there should be, uh, an opportunity to consider whether mitigation could minimize or eliminate any, any threats to the contoured furrowed areas. There's another statement in the plan that states, um, utilizing grazing utilization, forage utilization limits and stubble height absolutes. And there should be some flexibility in how those are determined. There's also a need for flexibility in season of grazing use to adjust for changing climatic conditions and forage availability. There's also a need to allow consideration of livestock number increases if range conditions have improved and the increase would continue to facilitate meeting or achieving the desired, the desired condition. In the wilderness section, and that would be in our specific case, the Dark Canyon Wilderness, there is a statement that use of the pevine motorized corridor would have minimal effect on adjacent wilderness uses and values. Now, this is not consistent with the legislation that established that wilderness area. In fact, that, that, uh, legislation basically said if it was not Congress's intent to establish buffer zones that would, uh, protect the adjacent wilderness values. Another, uh, new component that I mentioned earlier is goals. And it's not clear in the draft plan as to how, what a goal is or how it is used. So, I think there's could be some wording changes and some suggestions that I have in the letter that would help the public understand how those goals are a part of the planning components. Now, I just went through all of this very quickly without a lot of specific detail. And I don't know, do you have any questions on the document that is before you?
I haven't, um, heard anything about, uh, public comment period on this, uh, yet. Um.
Yeah.
Leave it protected. Why do we have to create?
Well, you gotta know, none of them are gonna hit an airplane that takes off.
Is it too premature to, uh, this letter? And can we wait until public comment period is registered, the federal register?
We could, we could do both. The Forest Service is accepting comments now as well as, once the public scoping period is announced in the federal register. The Forest Service has stated, they will consider comments, whether they're made in one or both or all, both of those comment periods. And if we, if you choose to send these comments now, that does not mean we cannot send other comments later.
Well, I, I would feel better if the comment period is announced. And then we can submit because you don't have anything regarding the, uh, Native American indigenous peoples', uh, input in here regarding, uh, gathering of healing herbs. All the, you need to contact those individual. That would be my comment. And also recommend that we table this until comment period is announced.
So moves her.
I'll, I'll second with a comment.
Hey, go ahead.
Nick, did I misunderstand? Is the Forest Service accepting public comments right now as well as comments from cooperating agents?
Yes, they're accepting comments now, which is the unofficial scoping period. And they will be accepting comments during the official scoping period whenever that occurs. And they would consider the comments, uh, equal value, whether submitted now or later. And they are, so are accepting comments from the general public, agencies, cooperating agencies, whoever.
So, the public comment is open right now, Willie?
That's under?
After, after federal, after federal registered notice will be released. And then by then, people are making comments.
It's the, uh, federal, uh, register yet.
Comments are acceptable now or after the federal register notification.
That was.
So, if we, if we send a letter in now, you could add to that letter what Willie wants to do as far as collecting of herbs and those kind of things by Native Americans, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, I really do wait.
He wants to wait, so.
A motion?
Can I make a motion second?
What was the motion?
It was to wait.
Cause I, I didn't hear, all they say was. So, with that, uh, elders in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hit it.
Nay.
What, what did you say?
You said nay?
Vote no.
You.
Vote no.
Motion.
So, your motion, Commissioner Maryboy, was to table it, and you're voting no against your motion?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, of all the years that we've, um, participated and ran meetings, when you motion something, doesn't mean that you're approving something. You are opening it for discussion. When you or the chair calls for approval, that's when you vote on it. Just me moving the items from, from the consent to here doesn't mean that I'm approving it.
That goes beyond my.
I vote no.
I'll vote no too.
Yeah, if he votes no.
So, if you two vote no, then motion fails and, uh, the letter is sent.
No letter should be sent. Too premature.
So, can I get a clear motion then? Restate your motion, please. Mr. Maryboy.
What was that, Matt?
So, please restate your motion, Commissioner Maryboy.
I vote no on this particular item.
Not motion.
So, restate your motion that you made.
Let's see, what was my motion here? You took, you guys took cutting in and out, um.
Our understanding.
My motion, my motion was to move the item from the consent agenda.
Done.
Yeah, we're.
That's already done.
Yeah, that's already done. Now, we're talking and we're, we're discussing the item. And you called for the question, and I voted no.
My understanding.
I have not seconded any motion yet on this item.
Mr. Maryboy, you said a motion, which was?
Discussion.
That gets in the way, discussion. You don't make a motion for discussion.
Well, I, I vote no.
You clearly state your motion. That's, that's all. Now, my justification for not approving the letter from resource person is it's premature. So, therefore, we should deny the letter.
That's, that's my position. That's, I stated that. I said it's too premature. And I did say that the federal register has to release that information before we respond to it.
So, that's the reason why I said, can you clearly state your motion? That way, Bruce and I can second.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, um, I'm gonna oppose this particular item because the, uh, the pre-register, um, from the federal has not been released yet. And I do believe that this letter is too premature. And I state that in the meeting, during the January's meeting. And I also recommend that, that you hear and understand that before we act on it. So, that was tabled then. So, now we're dealing it. We took it out of the consent agenda, we're dealing with it, and this is the way I'm gonna vote.
We're not voting. All you're doing is stating your motion.
Okay, I motioned it. I just barely explained.
Okay, there you go. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll make a substitute motion.
Okay, Mr. Adam will be recognized and thought.
I make a motion, we approved the letter with the changes that, uh, Ms., uh, Chairman Gray-Eye, Gray-Eyes recommended we make to allow for herb gathering and other kinds of, uh, medicinal gathering of plants on the Forest Service as part of the recommendation of the letter from this commission.
Okay, now, is there a second? Substitute motion. There been done? Don't second? Fail. So, what happened?
Do we have a second for Commissioner Maryboy's motion?
Mr. Maryboy's motion was to, uh,
Oppose the letter.
I don't know, confused.
I think he wants to oppose this item.
So, so is it to table the item or just to deny the item? If, both of them were spoken about. So, Commissioner Maryboy, is it to table it or to deny the letter?
Deny.
Okay, so that was his motion. So, we need a second to that motion.
No, we'll go ahead and second. Went around the world. All those, uh, the comments?
Well, you know, the only reason that, that I made the motion that I made is because things are important for the county to weigh in with a position with the Forest Service, telling the Forest Service, this is what the county wants to do. They want to, uh, um, they want to have some say in the draft plan by the forest. And part of what we want to say is we want Native Americans to be able to gather medicinal
Yeah.
plants and, and other things. Plants and, and other things. Along with the other things that Nick put in the letter, so I, I think if we don't. Send a letter to them, then they don't know, they don't have any input from us, and they don't know how we feel about their draft plan. So they may just move forward without any comments from the county. As to what we think needs to be in forest plans, so that, that's all I'm trying to do. I, I'm not. You know, I'm, I, I understand. Uh, where you and Kenneth are coming from, but that's, that's just kind of the general statement on, on why I want to approve the letters. Because I want the forest to know that the county wants to be part of, um, drafting this new plan for the forest.
Yeah.
Do I need to throw a point of order in there? We voted on this item.
Not yet. We haven't voted yet. So can you, uh. Uh, level the field first, Mister.
So I think that's exactly it. As a consulting party, to any plan, whether it's the, the Forest Service BLM. We have this right as a county, as a county entity, and as a body, to provide comments upfront. Um, outside of what the public is gonna make, what the public is gonna comment on. That's being a consulting party allows, and affords us those opportunities. And so Commissioner Adams' right is, if you want. As a county to say, hey, Forest Service, these are our interests, these are, who wants you to be. Hold sacred and protect and, and hold near and dear, prior to even getting to the public points. Um, and it's good to let them know, and that's what Nick does. Formerly Nick's job as a planner was to go through these plans. And say, okay, as a county's position, this is where we think we should be. Who, uh, he hears from you, and so typically, what you would see in this type of environment. I had it at the presentation in the informational items is, give us your input, if you want him to make the adjustments. In his draft letter, make those recommendations right now, and submit it. And then the public gets an opportunity to weigh in, the tribe will also get an opportunity to weigh in, and then. But yet, as a county, this is our position, these are what we hold true and, and near and dear. For our hearts to, to their plan. If you don't like where they're going with the plan, you get an opportunity as commissioners of the county to state that, and so that's why. The more the letter, to me, would be just as confusing, you not wanna give anything to the Forest Service. To me, I think that's worse, is you have an opportunity to make statements in their plan, and this is where the county wants. It's, it's no different than what you kind of seen with the, the Bear's Ears Travel Management Plan, that you'll see, that'll come back around. And you as commissioners, we have, we have B roads, and it affects, that's what we do, and so you wanna be able to weigh in as a county. That these are our points, these are what we take high priority of, and make those statements outside of what the public is gonna say. The public gets their opportunity as well, but this is afforded you as a consulting member. So hopefully that helps a little bit more. Why you're here, why you sent Nick's letter, if there's things that are missing, let's add it to it. Um, even if it's a five-page, six-page document, let's continue to add to it. And also that the Forest Service, they will, kind of what we would like to see in the, the Forest Service. The forest that, that we have to live off of, that's, that's the biggest thing. If there's herbs, then you want to cover it. Let's cover it all, we wanna comment, you know. Um, cause sometimes when you rely on the public to make the comments, they're so busy, they're just as busy as everybody else, and they may. Make those comments, but if it's been near and dear to the commissioners, then let's, let's state it in the letter. You know, that we send to them, county commissioners' comments.
Mister Chair, aye.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is Nick, Mister Chairman. There's one entire section in the draft for forest plan entitled Areas of Tribal Interest. And this section recognizes the importance of these forest lands to the ancestral and traditional needs of American Indians. And one of the desired conditions in that section is that. Forest resources important for cultural and traditional needs, as well as for subsistence practices and economic support of tribal communities. Such as fuel, ceremonial wood products, minerals, medicinal and food plants. An object of cultural patrimony are available and sustainable. Now that's a basic desired condition, which is to be managed for. So I did not make any comment on those types of statements that I felt were appropriate and consistent with our resource management plan. And likely consistent with the desires of Native American peoples. So I think maybe some of your concerns, uh, Commissioner Gray-Eyes, uh, are actually in the plan.
So. Where do we go with it?
So right now, as it is, you have a, a motion to deny the letter, and you've got, I think you seconded that. Uh, we need to call the vote or have a substitute, substitute motion?
Okay. If there's no other discussion, I call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Yeah, you're only, you're the only one, Commissioner. Yeah, he's there.
Kenneth, how do you vote?
You haven't said nay yet, I'm waiting for the nay.
He's waiting for the nay. So you said aye. Sounds like he's a nay.
I vote no.
So you've got one to the motion to decline, and two against the motion to decline the letter. So. Now you would have another motion?
You make another substitute? I make a substitute.
The motion fails?
Um, yeah, you're the only one that voted for the motion, Commissioner Gray-Eyes.
So there's a, uh. A substitute motion that's gonna be presented by Mister Adams?
I make a motion, we support, uh, sending the letter and have the Chairman sign it.
With the, uh. Condition, understanding that other comments are welcome.
Yes, you can do them again.
Until, uh, termination or cutoff date of the public comment.
Right. Yep, that's part of my motion.
Okay. Did you hear that, Mister Maryboy?
Yeah, Mac, make sure that, uh, in the letter, it says that I voted no.
Uh, just ask if you understood Mister Adams' motion? Yes or no?
Hello?
Can you hear him?
Hello? Mac?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are, there you are.
What have you been drinking, Kenneth? Share. I'm just kidding. All right, uh. Mister Adams says, let's approve. The motion. What Mister Dea presented in his statement. The, uh, interest. Of the indigenous people regarding their interest. To the area on herbal gathering and wood and whatnot, is already converted into the comment. Plus, there's an open door for other comments. To be entertained until the cutoff date of the public comment under the federal register. So, uh, it seems fair. Um. Situation. So with that, uh. Mister Adams', uh, motion still standing. We need a second.
So are you calling for the question?
Um. Lifted or seconded to the substitute motion?
Go ahead, sir.
I will not second that motion. My intention was to table it until such time that the federal public comment period appears in the paper. I don't know when, how, under what. Uh, policy and procedure, the Forest Service says, go ahead and. Open a public comment period for the local area. So, I have no idea. Is there a motion to table it?
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that. To table it. Hello?
Yeah. Second?
He sec- he seconded, you're.
My motion.
Correct, you made a motion to table, Commissioner Maryboy.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three opposed, nay? Thank you very much. That was ungracefully.
So.
Motion carries three, carries zero opposing.
So the last item on the agenda, you had temporarily tabled the Sky Ranch Estate subdivision. Phase two until we can get an attorney. Um, here, looks like we do have Attorney Alex. Is on. Um, Scott, I don't know if you wanna recap that discussion. On there, we'll turn it over to Scott to kind of give us a recap of. Where we were at, and then we can go into some of the legal discussion we had.
All right, so we talked, um, about this subdivision, um. Sky Ranch Estates Phase Two. Um. We, we discussed just that the, the airport itself is a use that's been there since nineteen eighty-five. Um. And that we are, we are considering, uh, the subdivision of the Phase Two of the Sky Ranch Estates subdivision. Lot sizes and things, this was received in October. Uh, the, uh, county staff has reviewed it and has found that it, it needs, are the requirements of zoning. Um, and that we would, then it went before the Planning Commission, um, at their February eleventh meeting. And they, um, unanimously approved that. Um, so now it is coming before the County Commission for their approval, the County Commission.
Is that number eleven?
It was.
On the agenda, it was nine.
Nine.
This is the, uh, this is the one Commissioner Maryboy had asked us to hold off until we had an attorney present. To help with the decision on there, um. One of the, one of the things, Alex, uh, if you're there, um, one of the things that was mentioned and just brought up is. We've got Utah code that we follow with, um, those are ordinance that we follow for, um. Land use and plat maps.
Yeah.
One of the things we discussed is. Everything on the plat map really should be considered outside of the airport. The airport isn't in consideration today. The regulations and rules and, and guidelines that the airport falls under is the FAA's guidelines, nothing, has nothing to do with the county's. Guidelines, and so what we're looking at today is, and only applying, um, the ordinance as it was adopted in twenty nineteen, and so. All of this pre, the airport predates our current ordinances, they're not asking to change the ordinance to, or a land use request to. Allow for the airport because that's already something grandfathered in. Because of that, all we're really looking at is, does the plat map, uh. Comply and, um, meet the requirements of the zone, uh, that this is in as far as. Um, plat maps are concerned.
Okay, so there was a lot of information in there, um, what's the, it, which question do you want me to hit first?
I'll ask you the question.
Okay.
Uh, in my opinion, we're just being asked to approve or deny. The Sky Ranch Estate subdivision Phase Two. Uh, the, uh, Planning and Zoning Board has determined. That they need all the requirements and recommended that we approve. If we don't approve it and we deny it, are we, we putting ourselves in any legal jeopardy?
That would depend on the reason for denying it, so all land use decisions are, um, made. Um, one at a time probably isn't the right way to describe it, but, um, as it's been described to me, the airport. Was approved years ago, and the question before this body is the residential development around it.
But I think.
Denying the residential development, absent a reason in the ordinance itself. Could land you in, could land the county in legal trouble.
But to deny it because of, because there's an airstrip in the, in the subdivision itself? Does that places in legal jeopardy?
To, to deny it because an airstrip exists nearby?
Yep.
Yes, because if I've, at least in looking at the ordinance, the Spanish Valley sub ordinance that was adopted in twenty nineteen, it makes no discussion in that residential zone about. it makes no discussion in that residential zone about whether, about there being a barrier or anything around that or around that airport. And since there's nothing in the ordinance that says that you can't build residential homes around the airport in that residential area, you're, those are the rules that um that the county adopted and those are the ones we have to live by.
So if we deny this, we could possibly be sued by the developer, the county could.
Correct. I mean, all land use decisions, um probably, let me think of the best way to phrase this. All land use decisions come fraught with the possibility that somebody somewhere is going to sue the county over it. The point, the purpose for this commission is to review whether or not the Spanish Valley sub ordinance has been complied with. If it has been complied with, then, then you risk a denial that will be overturned and will cost the county. If, if that's a lawyer enough answer for you. So, um, my understanding in, in speaking with, with Scott about this is it's his opinion that they are in compliance with the Spanish Valley ordinance in making this request. And if that is the determination of county staff and it's been approved by um the Planning and Zoning Commission, then the commission cannot deny it just because there has to be a reason based in law, either hey, we found something that's in violation of the ordinance, we found something that's in violation of state law. If there's been no such finding, then there's no basis for the denial.
Okay, that's alright.
Commissioner Maryboy, did you have any questions for our attorney? I know that you, that was one of the things that you wanted, had asked for. Commissioner Maryboy, are you there?
There, there you go. Um, who, which attorney is that?
This is Alex.
Whoa.
You're illustrious.
Um. Well, um, I think um every, every individual, every group of people, everybody has a right. And right now, I've asked, um, I think Bruce asked for a legal opinion. And I said, why isn't our attorney available? Why can't we have an attorney that will be sitting there to give us information when it's readily available? Now, it's after the fact that we're dealing with it. I thought I tabled this thing. Now we're, we're talking about it again at the end of the agenda. So section seventeen was brought up that needs to be looked at.
After, yeah, chapter seventeen.
And everybody, everybody has a right. Anybody. The community that lives there and resides there are concerned. And I'm also concerned about this. So if, 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 if the attorney that's advising us is saying what he's saying, then what's the point in discussing it? He sounds like he's already ready to make an approval without even thinking about this whole thing thoroughly. So if that's the case, if we can bring it back up again, then my motion would be to table this item until we get in touch with the right appropriate uh people to give us some guidance. And also, a recommendation of how it's being dealt with in other rural cities. And earlier we heard these people making statements, what if that happens? What if this happens? And if it's in the middle of a subdivision, it would be ludicrous for anybody to develop any kind of a, an operating uh establishment. You never know what would happen. That's my concern. I think that should be a concern to all of us. Otherwise, if you don't think like that, then write a letter to the community saying that we don't care what happens to you. We're gonna go ahead and put an airport right here and operate it. Maybe that needs to be done. So I made a motion.
Mister Chair, is it possible for me to make a comment?
So.
Well, I'm not sure if there was a question in there from me or not, Mac.
I don't, yeah, I didn't hear a question. I don't, I don't see um that online either anymore. I don't know if Mike has anything to add to it. With that, kind of what I'm hearing is Commissioner Maryboy made a motion to table. Did you?
No.
And so we just it's like need a second without.
I'll go ahead and second. If there's no further comments, uh, all those who favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Yay!
Opposed? Nope. One opposed. Two in favor. One opposed, most of the chairs to table.
So one of the questions that we have with that. So if it's tabled, what do you want us to do now with this?
Mac, I can answer that question.
Okay, go ahead, Alex.
Tabling is a no.
So the table is actual denial.
It is an actual denial.
So, but it's a denial without reason though. Yeah, that's, that's where I have a hard time is, it's a denial without reason. Yeah, yeah.
I think by a dinosaur was there for development around it.
Oh, absolutely. Pangaea.
Yes. So. Uh, at that time, there was no planning zoning committee there. Also, the commission did not have uh or aware or not aware of the situation. It just continues to roll over, roll over until.
Yeah.
People around there realize, hey, there's uh health and safety issues. And there should be a buffer zone. Uh, all of that. And it, how do we get out of it?
We need to consider the law as it is. That's what, that's what Alex was getting at. If, if we wanted buffer zones, then we probably would have we need to do that through zoning ordinance and through development ordinance that creates a buffer zone, but there's not one. That's where we're at right now. We have an active application.
And that, that's the hard part is, so you're you're, and upon where land owners, property owners have rights to develop. They have a right to subdivide. So last year you set the rule to where you allowed for a smaller lot size in the Spanish Valley ordinance. So you allowed for that. All the applicant is doing is this, that. He's made an application to go and get smaller lot sizes within his development. He owns that property. He has. Um, now, understanding that there's all these concerns, um, you heard today that you know, as homes approach airport, if you look at several airports throughout Utah, you'll see this well, Air Force Base, um, Moab, Moab sits right next to the highway. Um, that, any bus that's driving down that road has the same problem with the approach um with airplanes there. You look at um Airport Two in Salt Lake City. It's kind of all goes around, um. Up in airport, above all airport. All of these residential pieces encroaching airports, but the problem that you have is the airport was there before. And the developer, and, and what I like about it is the developer had mentioned that he's treating this as private airport and um the uses that are around here that he's planning on, it's a mixed use where you have residential uh and you have that airport hangar tied together. And so he's creating a public use or a private use, not a public use with his own property. And so to me, that's, my concern is tabling, kind of Alex had mentioned is it is a denial, but you denied the application without cause, without merit. And you, that's illegal. You, you have to, in your actions, we've got to, we've got to state why, why it is that you do not like this plat or where it meets and doesn't meet your zoning ordinance. That's why I referenced. And, and it's not section seventeen of Utah Code, it's chapter seventeen of the Utah Code, which governs plat, plats required. Um, when land is subdivided, which is what this applicant is doing. If it's more information that you want um for us to seek out before you make a decision, um you know, then we can definitely, you could state that as part of it, but to just table it outside of, you know, we'll, we'll have some, I have some concerns with that as well as your attorney.
Well, uh. The uh the motion party.
Commissioner Maryboy.
Mister Chair, we just barely voted, right?
Yeah.
And after the fact, we're discussing. Mister Chair, again, it's black and white. Two different things. The attorney wants to call it um, non-action item denial. But for the record, I tabled the item. And Mister McDonald is seeking some, for some guidance of what's supposed to come out of this tabling. Tabling motion. When we table this item as you and the Chair, Chair, Mister Chair yourself, we are hoping that we would at least come up with a recommendation of who, how, when this item should be brought back. And, and it, it doesn't make any sense for our attorney to tell us that no matter what, the airport was there and so therefore those people that are around it can just hush and go back into their dark hole. I don't see it that way. These are people just like you and I. They deserve to live where they want to. And where is the negotiation? Where is the party? We're the one that's supposed to be the people that's supposed to be in between the two parties to make a good living. I don't see that. So again, we're, 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 we're discussing after the fact. And for the record, I tabled it. I didn't deny it. That's the attorney's call. If he wants to call a denial, then by all means.
Go ahead. So just so you're aware, when we did consult um our um our ALJs or our, wow, for some reason it's skipping my head. It's getting late in the afternoon. Um, our administrative law judge, when our administrative law judge looked at another item similar to this, we had just tabled it. He did, in fact, remind us that it is in state code that it was stated that table during a land use decision is an actual denial. So even if you table, I mean, it's, we've got to get a little bit more than just now, right? Because the table in itself is that, it's that, it's denial.
Mister Chair.
Yes, there has to be a uh table in there. In that. Just, in this case, it's a table forever.
Which would be a denial, correct.
Now.
Mister Chair.
If, if the table was to, with some type of timetable.
Mister Chair.
And reason. A directive would be uh more clear than just to table it. If those are, then we wouldn't be able to, or there not could be any legal action against the table in motion. So that's what I would uh look for.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Mister Maryboy.
So my last question to our attorney. So this is a complete denial is the way you're going to respond?
So to answer that question, if you table it without any follow-up directive or anything such as seeking information, then it's denial. And as the motion was only to table and nothing else was attached to that motion, then it's a denial.
Well, my phone cuts out. There's certain things I cannot hear. It must be the same thing on that side. You don't table anything without no probable cause or no recommendation. My table in motion was to get you to in touch with those that are involved with this and come back with an answer. But all that, I don't know if you all heard me, but that's what my recommendation and my table in motion was. Did anybody hear that?
That didn't come through to me.
Nope. No, these are I.
Hey, well, we already voted. Unless you want to call it back, then I can make that recommendations.
Okay, go ahead. Recall the.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Item.
Bruce wants to recall it.
Do we need a vote? We can make a motion to recall it. Maybe so it's all clean.
Oh. Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Is there a motion to recall the item? Numbered.
Seven. Oh, I see, sorry.
Number nine. Oh, no.
Number nine.
Nine. Number nine. Item number nine.
Motion to recall.
Mister Adams' motion to recall. There's second. Second by Mister Maryboy. All those in.
Mister Chair.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three in favor.
Mister Chair.
Eight, zero. Mister Maryboy.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make another motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Like to make a, I'd like to make a motion for approval of this project. But with the conditions that the community is being consulted with the party that's going to be developing is being consulted that the community is being consulted with the party that's going to be developing is being consulted and bring that information back to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Call for the question.
Mister Maryboy, second by Mister Adams. Any further elected discussion?
Question.
Question by Mister Adams.
Alex, does that get us out of legal trouble?
Uh, yes and no. Um, if I'm understanding the motion correctly, the motion is to approve with, um, with a requirement which gets a little bit complicated that the developer needs to meet with the Planning and Zoning Commission and take public comment on their concerns. If I, if I understand Commissioner Maryboy's motion correctly.
This, this safety oversight that oversees airports and airplane and community, that we need to know when the response comes back.
Okay, so, so that discussion is for informational purposes?
Yes.
Then I believe as, as, as long as, uh, Mister Burton has otherwise determined, um, and the Planning and Zoning Commission has otherwise determined the plat to be in compliance with the Spanish Valley sub ordinance, that should save us the legal trouble.
Good. Call for a question.
Call for the question. All those who favor-
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, eight? Three favors, zero opposed, motion carries? Thank you.
So what's the vote?
Three, three, three favor, zero oppose.
I'm gonna run to the, now I'm gonna be taken off, guys.
Yeah, we just need a motion to adjourn. I think that unless you guys have public comments. Or-
Motion to adjourn.
Seconds.
Motion is made by Kenna to adjourn, second by Mister Adams. And I start. Call for the question.
Yes.
Say aye.
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 Read favor. Opposed, eight? Not aye. Three to zero. Motion to return is at, uh, four, uh, three?
Six.
Forty-five.
Six o'clock.
Three fifty-one, three fifty-one.
No.
It's like six o'clock. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
He scared me.
Yeah, me too. I had to look at it.
I had to do us.
You didn't think-
Same again.
Didn't think, you thought it was dark outside, huh?